Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandieg county.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register, and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to room 302 or the fourth floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call December 10th, 2025, San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Legislative Session to Order. Orion, please call the rule for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp. Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Desmond, Chair Prota McGeeery, Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp, and Chair Lawson Reimer.
Okay, before we begin this meeting, I want to take a moment to address some House rules. Public engagement is the cornerstone of transparent and accountable government, and these Board of Supervisors meetings are one of the primary venues where all San Diegans can make their voices heard. The county is committed to a work environment free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, including sexual, racial, religious, age, disability, or any other form of discrimination or harassment. Under the Board's rules, speakers are not allowed to use loud shouting, threatening, impertinent, slanderous, profane, or abusive language to any member of the Board staff or the general public. Additionally, all remarks and questions must remain on topic during the duration of your speaking time and must be addressed to the Board and not to county staff. Any speaker who engages in comments that break these rules will be issued a warning. After one warning, you will be asked to leave the chambers for the rest of the meeting. Finally, speakers threatening violence may be reported to law enforcement and removed from the meeting. This is a space for community engagement, deliberation, and progress, not for harassment, violence, and hate. So with that, we will now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not on item... Not on... But not an item on the meeting agenda. The only action that the Board may take is a referral to the Chief Administrative Officer. Under the Board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either at yesterday's General Legislative Session or today's Land Use Legislative Session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the Board at their own convenience. To better facilitate the meeting for non-agenda public comment, we will have five speakers in person and then five speakers by phone. The rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with Board rules to ensure... In order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda for any discussion item with 10 speakers or more, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion at the chair's discretion. A reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are not English-speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments. And a final reminder, according to the Board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Orion, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp. We do have 14 total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda for individuals in person and 10 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You'll then have two minutes to address the Board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll invite forward the first three individuals, Dorothea Flanagan, Robert Germin, and Cesar Javier.
Thank you, Uncle Sam. This is Cesar, victim of miscarriage of justice, ceramics manufacturing toxicity, next-door's property, waiting for solution from lawful authorities. We voted for Madam Stiff. We voted for Madam Agiri last election, expecting solutions for human survival. What have you been doing? This is not a violation of what you just taught us, but rather language coming from pain, sufferings, injustice. You may be threatened because you are not doing your job. I'm sorry. Uncle Sam, thank you for this democracy, and we are here to protect that democracy with all cost. And we have done that against the council-elected officials of the city where Monica has left. Remember the footnote seven, Mom? You forgot it. An abuse under the table arrangement of the HABs. District 4, City of San Diego, is packed like serpents. You know that, Mom. And now you are here, and from that lesson, we expect solution for human survival. That's one. But our petition to you, sirs and moms, help us. This is profit verse one.
Thank you. Your time's up.
And safety. Thank you, sir. Pardon my...
Good morning. I'm Dorothea Flanagan of District 5, North San Diego County. I have a rhetorical question for you. Where is the beautification for San Diego County? I could write a part for the Mr. Grinch movie, and it's called "Billboards." There's the ocean. There's a mountain range. Billboards. Oh, there's a lit-up one at night in your neighborhood. I'd like you to know that I measured the latest one billboard. It's 55 feet wide and 40 feet high, and it was on a mountain, too, on a hill. Now the billboard companies can just do whatever they want. That particular picture is, if you're not making enough money in your business, just put up a billboard, and you know, you'll have another income stream. That... We drove up I-15. It starts pretty badly at Temecula, where they block the view of the gorgeous mountain ranges. We have a right to look at those beautiful mountain ranges. I'm really tired of fighting graffiti, trash, illegal buildings and things like that. I'm way better at planning Bogan Villa, Succulents, and, for example, in Gopher Canyon, five locations for the drivers coming through to enjoy them. I can't fight billboards. You've got to stop it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as our next speaker's coming up, I'll invite forward our final in-person speaker, Gerald Flanagan.
Really do that.
You ready, Jer? Are you ready, Robert?
Robert Germin. First slide is an FAA criteria for based aircraft. This is necessary data for surrounding communities. Please post this data on County of San Diego Airport's website for every airport. Second slide is another airport closure scheduled for closure explains the options available to a local airport authority for relieving, transferring FAA grant monies in a municipality's consolidation program. Third slide is a letter from the Gillespie Pilots Association dated May 8th, 2004, concerning the ALP. The Buckner lease is 70 acres. This parcel has been vacant for over 20 years, which suggests a feasibility study of a new DPW administration building and maintenance yard incorporating a Bob Dennis Gillespie Field, state-of-the-art inner-city park, which we were promised and never received in 20 years. Right now, the DPW Maintenance Yard shares a sand te... Temporary sand te fire station. I think the DPW, with this 70-acre parcel in the middle of the city, is a perfect location for a new yard and administration building that we can build a park with plenty of parking and access for the people of East County. It would just simply be nice, and we deserve it. El Cajon is built out. Sand te is getting that way. Now they're spreading out into Lakeside. Why don't we just put a park? That we were promised. That's why we gave up the Speedway. That we were promised and have never gotten in... On this parcel of 70 acres. It's been vacant for so long. Okay, thank you, and Merry Christmas. I think I can say that.
Everybody that's listening, have a blessed day. I'm Gerald Flanagan, North County, San Diego. I've been watching the systematic billboard destruction of San Diego County. I want to know how something so blighting could ever happen without going on a ballot so all of us residents could vote against it. People should have a right to view and enjoy the beautiful mountains, ranges devoid of obstruction, advertising. Where has the concept of beautification gone? There are just some things you don't do for money. Who decided that billboards are above our desire to see natural, unadulterated scenery? The city and county politicians need to recognize that our tourists come here to see the beauty. We are not ugly Las Vegas. Please stop the billboard companies from... And gambling casinos from destroying our county. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. And again, in accordance with the Board's rules, we'll be hearing from the first five callers. Remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Board. My name is Kathleen Lippett, and I am an attendee of several unincorporated planning groups because I care very much that their voices are heard on the projects that this Board has and is continuing to permit in their unincorporated areas. Without any feedback from them, without any say, authority which has been taken away from them, one of the ways that that is done is through CEQA exemptions, which are common. Despite the known harmful and unmitigable environmental concerns, the purpose of CEQA was to safeguard air, water, wildlife, and other natural resources by requiring environmental reviews, not just checking off boxes, but from battery energy storage facilities, solar energy farms, wind turbines, marijuana farm cultivation, marijuana cultivation, manufacturing, sales, and high-density housing. It is clear that CEQA exemptions are used simply for this county Board to monetize unincorporated lands. Such projects are ignored in community voices. The state's commitment to sustainability and public welfare and the catastrophic harm to wildlife, soils, habitats, to live and for those who live in these unincorporated areas who live in the places that they chose years ago that nobody else wanted to live in. That country residents moved there for their open space, privacy, dark skies, for the wildlife and the sense of community in these unincorporated lands.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker. Madison, it's your turn to speak. You may be muted. Madison, are you there?
Sir, should make that clear. A new review of 99 studies involving more than 220,000 people published in the Annals of Internal Medicine and highlighted by the Epoch Times shows that today's high THC cannabis products, mabs, gab, and concentrates, are not the marijuana of the past. Typical THC levels in the 1980s were around 2% to 4%. But today, the flower averages 20% and vaping devices often deliver 70% to 90% THC. These ultra-potent products are directly linked to acute psychosis, schizophrenia, and addiction, sometimes within just 12 hours of use. Over half of the studies found high THC use increases anxiety and 41% found increases in depression. Frequent users face far greater risks of cannabis use disorder, affecting mood, motivation, and daily functioning. And this is where land use matters. Where cultivation and retail density increase, harm also increases. Large-scale grow operations bring with them environmental degradation, water use, chemical runoff, and energy-intensive indoor growths. And they also fuel the supply of very high potency products, causing this mental health crisis. More cultivation means more products, more marketing, and ultimately, more use, especially among young people. These harms fall hardest on the youth. When marijuana businesses cluster in or near residential and rural areas, access and normalization rise. Young people and their developing brains face higher risks of psychosis, hallucinations, and long-term mental health problems. The bottom line is this: Expanding marijuana storefronts or cultivation zones in our unincorporated areas is not land use that protects families. It increases risk, environmental burden, and mental health harm, especially for kids. Now is the time to listen to residents, consider the emerging scientific evidence, and reject any proposals that would allow more cannabis operations in the places least equipped to absorb the fallout.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Barbara Gordon. I want to share, December is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month. Data from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration shows December drunk driving deaths are the highest in 15 years. To help combat the impaired driving, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration wants to remind you... Wants to remind everyone with these campaigns: Drive sober or get pulled over. If you feel different, you drive different. Drive high, get a DUI. These campaigns, which run December 11th through January 1st, aim to educate people about the dangers and consequences of impaired driving. Like drunk driving, drug-impaired driving is illegal. Studies conducted at several trauma centers involving drivers who were seriously injured found that among those drivers, about 25% had active THC in their system. The psychoactive compound of marijuana slows reaction time, impairs cognitive performance, and makes it more difficult to keep a steady lane in position. There are many false misconceptions about marijuana use, such as it can make you a safer driver or it doesn't impair your driving ability. Ultimately, prioritizing road safety through robust marijuana regulations is essential for protecting the life of everyone. We must act decisively to ensure that our roads remain safe for everyone. Let's advocate for policies that address this growing concern and foster a safer driving environment for our community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Andrew Lawson, candidate for the 79th Assembly District here in California. Good morning. Yeah, yesterday's vote to not allow ICE into federal facilities, one great way to make California even more unsafe is there already is. We know California's getting caught left and right with fraud, giving out CDLs to illegal and undocumented people. We know that's happening, right? We learned last month of a guy that killed eight people on I-10 right here in California. But because of these sanctuary policies, ICE can't come in and get these people. They just get right back out on the streets. That's not even a smidge of what's occurred here in California. That's not even, that's not even a smidge of what's occurred here in California. This is fucking ridiculous, and I don't understand anybody that voted for this shit. I really don't. But thankfully, California, we got Bill of Salies that's uncovering a lot of the corruption in California. I want to remind the citizens of California that we are co-rulers of this great state and we have the power to instruct our representatives. Today, I'm instructing the Democrat members of this Board of Supervisors to reverse course in San Diego County and stop this unruly and unnecessary rebellion against the United States of America. Now, I'd also like to specifically instruct Representative Aguirre on her idea that she's going to sit here and wait on appointing members of the Spring Valley Community Planning Group that we have already recommended to the Board of Supervisors. You don't, you don't need to do that. It's not in your rules anywhere. Get it on the agenda and get these people on our board. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our final speaker.
Hi, my name is Dora Fahim, president and founder of Los Angeles Alliance for Animals. Only in the county of San Diego would Deputy CAO Andrew Strong allow for the removal of two horses on Artesian Road, yet leave the remaining horses behind to continue suffering in blatant neglect and abuse. These animals are trapped with a chronic quarter who has a long documented history of serious mental health issues and severe neglect. Horses drinking algae water, moldy hay, hay mixed with feces, allegations of horses being denied medical treatment, and horses confined in their stalls 24/7 with no exercise, no movement, and no basic decency. Meanwhile, the bodies of deceased horses have literally accumulated a tragic line of preventable deaths that rests squarely on the failures of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. And that leads us to Deputy CAO Andrew Strong. At this point, the only reasonable explanations of his actions or inactions are the following: A, we have allegations he's lying; B, he's complicit in animal cruelty despite claiming otherwise; or C, he does not understand animal law or county policies, yet CAO Ebony Shelton has placed him in charge of overseeing the AS when he has demonstrated a complete lack of leadership and accountability. And because of him and Supervisor Tara Larson-Reimer, Supervisor Julie Anderson, Supervisor Monica Step, and Supervisor Paloma Aguirre, Director Vaughn Maurice continues to run the county shelter into absolute chaos, turning it into a bloodbath where dogs are killed for behaviors as minors biting their leash with retaliation, and Assistant Director calling dog shit. Despite a court order allowing access onto the property, Deputy CAO Andrew Strong continues, continues to conduct welfare checks from the road. Because of this, and because of continued inaction by this very board, the suffering on Artesian Road continues with your full knowledge. I want this on record. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson-Reimer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda. This is items one through four. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Members of the public can comment on the consent agenda after supervisors pull any items we'd like to for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items or have any comments? Vice Chair?
No need to pull any items.
Okay. Chair Perotama Aguirre? No. Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
No items to pull, no comments. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Okay, we'll go to public comment before we take a vote.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Reimer. We do have eight total requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, two individuals in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. For any individuals that did request to speak on items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows and tell it as your turn to speak at the podium. You'll then have two minutes to address the board. If you could please begin by stating your name for the record. Also, identify which items you're speaking on the consent agenda about. And I'd like to invite forward the following individuals: Caesar Javier and allegedly Audra.
Caesar and Purita, we wish to live longer in our twilight years. And our input in all this consent agenda only meant to us that you are only after profit, money, money, money versus the health, longevity, safety of humans and the habitat. We call in urban planning shell. On item number one, don't touch what the Caltrans had planned. You don't have to wait sundag.
Welcome, host. You are now in the host room and can manage your callers from the call-in studio.
Could you bring back my time, sir?
Your time has paused.
Don't let sundag apply their authority for, you know, acquiring back what is your planning to get. That is no for number one. For number two, you know, Nora Vargas, the good lady, stepped down for some reason, probably on one angle about this. Why only now that we are talking about what have we done to the victims, by the way? Number three, no, no, no. Number four, please remember, money is not always the solution for or resource in the delivery of public good. It is the trust from us. That's the reason why we voted for you, Ma'am Monica, Ma'am Aguirre. By God, that's a challenge, threatening. No, conscience.
Thank you. And not seeing allegedly Audra in the chamber. We'll go ahead and move on to our callers. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and then you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
How you guys doing? I remember, how much money are we going to be dumping into the NGOs on, let's just say, the second item? An ungodly amount. You do realize that the problem that you see in Poway for the recall, I mean, for the 50th, you're going to see that all over the place? So are you guys really going to waste our money? I want you to remember this day because if we have another election that is a vote by mail election, you did that on purpose. You know that, right? You know how close Trump is to actually figuring it out? He's so damn close. He's asking for the right stuff right now, which is amazing because you guys are still trying to pretend it's not happening, right? Yeah, that's friggin' amazing to me. You're willing to take, you're willing to take the full blame on all this because you want to fight me on election security. That boggles my mind because it's not that hard to figure it out. It's not that hard to figure out if someone gets, you get a mail ballot.
Please just indicate which item on the consent agenda you're speaking to. Thank you.
I'm speaking on the fact that all this is corrupt, and because we have faulty elections that are controlled by you, you guys are able to steal our money and move it to wherever you want.
Please pause this time.
Because you guys are the ones.
Pause this time. This is your first warning. Make sure that your remarks are directed to specific matters within the board's purview that are on the consent agenda in front of us. That's items one through four. If you continue off topic, you will forfeit your time. Thank you.
How many hundred millions of dollars are you going to be giving to the NGOs, you know, the architects of power that went ahead and opened up our election system so that anyone could go ahead? On number two, how many hundreds of million dollars are you going to be giving the companies that basically made it so that it's possible to fraud the election? How much money are you going to give them? I mean, you and I were.
Okay, these comments are not germane to item two on consent.
I'm asking you how much money.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Reimer. And I'm not seeing any other callers connected, so that will conclude public comment, item, public comment on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson-Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting now.
Okay, thank you very much. So just a reminder for everyone, we had a few items continued from yesterday. We're going to begin with discussion on item five, which is the Palomar Airport approved lease with United Airlines and related CEQA findings. As I know, there's been significant public interest in this item, so we'll hand the floor to our county team for a presentation.
Chair Lawson-Reimer and members of the board, good morning. My name is Jamie Abbott, and I'm the director of airports for the county. We are here to present and seek your approval for a lease agreement with United Airlines. County airports is responsible for the development, operations, and maintenance of seven county airports, including the maintenance of runways, taxiways, ramps, access roads, and other facilities that support general and commercial aviation. Complying with federal regulations that make us eligible for FAA funds, we build and maintain a robust county airport system and provide critical services for our community, including the businesses, emergency responders, and the flying public without a cost to the county's general fund. Palomar Airport has been in operation in Carlsbad since 1959 and is designated by the FAA as a commercial service airport. Aside from San Diego International Airport, Palomar is the only other facility in the county providing access to commercial services for our region. Palomar has a long history of commercial services, which were provided by United Express for more than 20 years until 2015. Commercial services resumed at Palomar in January 2025. The county is obligated by federal law and FAA regulations to review and negotiate in good faith without discrimination and with service providers wishing to lease space to provide commercial service. If the county were to be found operating outside of these regulations and grant assurances, the county can no longer qualify for FAA grants and funds that allow the airports to operate without utilizing the county's general purpose revenue or other local funds. Palomar Airport supports economic activity and prosperity in North County and the region. This airport directly supports 2,600 jobs in the region, drives about $83 million in industry activity, and generates approximately $15 million in federal, state, and local taxes annually. And we expect these positive impacts to grow with additional jobs created related to this lease agreement. County airports, including Palomar Airport, are heavily funded by FAA grants, with over 90% of all capital costs being funded by the FAA. These costs are for building and maintaining airport infrastructure. Over the years, the county received FAA grant funds of about $123.5 million, including $53 million directly supporting Palomar Airport, underscoring significant investment. The continuation of commercial services at this airport will bolster the economic impact for the region and help ensure critical ongoing financial commitment from the FAA. While federal dollars support the airport capital infrastructure, operations at all county airports, including Palomar, are covered directly from the Airport Enterprise Fund through the leases, fees, charges, grants, and other contributions, allowing DPW to operate all airports safely, efficiently, and cost-effectively. While the board's approval of the lease, with the board's approval of the lease, United Airlines will be operating from Palomar Airport with the first flight on March 30th, 2026. United proposes utilizing the Embraer 175 aircraft, a commonly-used airplane with 70 seats for up to four departures, two to San Francisco International and two to Denver International Airport, with four arrivals per day. All flights are within the voluntary noise abatement hours, with the first flight at 7:30 a.m. and the final flight arriving at 9:50 p.m. These destinations serve as major United Airlines hubs, offering passengers from North County convenient one-stop connections to national and international markets. Approval of the lease is within the county's existing authority and complies with all conditions governing the use of the airport. Staff at United Airlines are proposing that the board approve a three-year lease term with two one-year extension options beginning March 1st, 2026. The terms of the lease are typical to other leases the county holds with other airlines that operate out of the airport. United Airlines will use the existing terminal, parking facilities, aircraft ramp space, ticket counters, kiosks, and office space. We anticipate receiving over $1 million in revenue from each year of the lease. Staff recommends partially waiving fees for the first year of operations, reducing revenue to $538,722. Fee waivers are common practice across the industry and are encouraged by the FAA to incentivize and attract airlines to help mitigate the significant risks they take when expanding to new regions, promote the use of existing underused facilities, and create regional economic and transportation benefits. Full revenue of over $1 million annually would be paid for years two through five. As part of our ongoing community engagement efforts, county staff reached out to the stakeholders and presented the terms of the lease to the Palomar Airport Advisory Committee. The committee deliberated on the item and recommended bringing the item back in January. However, staff and the chair clarified that this item will be heard by the board today, which is before the next committee meeting in January and therefore may not return to the advisory committee. Staff also reached out to multiple chambers of commerce and industry-related groups who are enthusiastic about the anticipated regional economic benefit and job creation. In addition to outreach, the county has previously developed a voluntary noise abatement program, or VNAP, in 2006, providing guidance and recommendations to pilots to help minimize noise levels over residential areas and raise residential and pilot awareness of noise and low-flight concerns. We also expanded our noise monitoring around the airport and added a staff member to address concerns and continue education to the pilot community. We are also actively supporting a VNAP subcommittee led by the PAC members to evaluate additional opportunities to mitigate noise at the airport. Compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, is required for all actions taken of the Board of Supervisors. In 2021, the board approved Palomar Airport's master plan and certified its Program Environmental Impact Report, or EIR. Not only did the EIR study the master plan's potential improvements over the next 20 years, but it also anticipated and studied a potential increase in commercial airline activity. The EIR concluded that impacts could be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. Today's action includes consideration of a lease for United Airlines to operate at Palomar Airport. The EIR already analyzed and increased, an increase in commercial airline activity. As allowed under CEQA, the new activity proposed by United Airlines was compared against the certified EIR. Staff concluded that United Airlines' proposal activity is within the levels anticipated by the ER, and a new EIR is not required. To demonstrate this, the Environmental Review Update Checklist was prepared and is attached to today's board letter documenting our findings. In summary, staff concluded that United Airlines' lease agreement would not result in new significant impacts or warrant the need for mitigation under CEQA. Today, we are asking the board to consider that the board finds the 2021 McClellan-Palomar Airport Master Plan Program Environmental Impact Report complies with CEQA and no substantial changes require additional environmental review for the United Airlines lease agreement. Approve the county issuing a three-year lease term with two one-year extension options with United Airlines in compliance with the FAA regulations and authorize the Director of Airports to execute the lease. And to authorize the Director of Airports to also waive approximately $517,600 of fees and charges the county airports is anticipated to receive from United Airlines in the first year of operations. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions. Lastly, I'd like to share that United Airlines representative is here today. If members of the board would like to ask them any questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you very much. Do any colleagues have questions before we go to public comment? Okay, go ahead to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Reimer. We do have 17 total requests to speak, 11 individuals in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. Also, I'd like to note for the record, we did receive 457 ecomments on this item. 105 were in favor, 342 were in opposition, and one was neutral. For any individual that requested to speak on the items by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows. if you please come forward and stand on the arrows until it's your turn to speak at the podium. You'll then have one minute to address the board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Like to invite forward the following individuals: Gretchen Ashton, Dom Betro, and Alan Baldus. Since we have 10 or more speakers, per the board's rules, you have one minute to speak.
I'm Gretchen Ashton. I live in Carlsbad, 92011. I oppose the proposed United Airlines lease. The agenda documents misrepresent the county's obligations, particularly with FAA Grant Assurance 22. The use of unjust discrimination is out of context. FAA Assurance 22, item I explicitly states, "The sponsor may prohibit or limit any given type, kind, or class of aeronautical use of the airport if such action is necessary for the safe operation of the airport or necessary for the service, to serve the civil aviation needs of the public." The county's own minimum standards list more than a dozen reason valid, valid reasons for denial, and the FAA Circular 1505198 further reinforces that minimum standards must be tailored to the specific airport. It specifically states it would be unreasonable to apply minimum standards for a medium or large hub airport to a general aviation airport serving primarily piston-powered aircraft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dom Betro. I live in Carlsbad. I also help coordinate the Palomar Airport Action Network, which has representatives from some 25 HOAs and five community groups throughout North County. I had other remarks prepared, but in one minute, I just want to counter some of Mr. Abbott's presentations to you. Number one, Palomar is a general aviation airport, not a commercial airport. That's how it's rated. Number two, Mr. Abbott himself presented a couple of months ago to the PAC that there was a $3.3 million loss at Palomar, which was made up magically from the Enterprise Fund. This year, they have failed to present an operating budget to the PAC showing what the operating income and expenses are at Palomar. They don't know that these are North County passengers taking these flights. They could be anyone. I'd like to see the evidence of that. The PAC vote was not to approve and to defer because they were not given a lease, they were not given information to respond, and finally, the CEQA stuff is false, and that's what will eventually take this down.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. As our next speaker is coming forward, I'll call the two, the next two speakers, Hope Nelson and Howard Kraus.
Hi, Alan Baldus, Carlsbad resident. My friend Dana Eyre, an expert in strategic communications and conflict, coined a phrase that perfectly fits a lot of the folks you'll be hearing from today, and that's activated resistance. These are people who have been stirred, poked, prodded, and taking up a fight claiming to speak on behalf of all North County. These people care, there's no doubt about that, but the activated resistance are not representative resistance. They're outliers, anomalies, exceptions rather than the mainstream. The representative majority is what we see every day from the real cross-section of North County, tens of thousands, tens of thousands, businesspeople, families, vacationers, and tourists who go to the Palomar Airport, queue for their flights, and appreciate the convenience that the commercial service brings to all of our region. These are people who aren't here today. The reason why they're not here today is because they're working, traveling, living their busy lives. They're not tracking every twist of this issue, and therefore they are underrepresented in this room.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hope Nelson. I'm a founding member and past president of Citizens for a Friendly Airport. Do not sign this contract. It was just last February that Americans started flying out of Palomar, and now the county seems anxious to double down before litigation related to American is complete by signing yet another contract, this one with United, and you are not fooling anybody. This is just the beginning. The size of the Embraer 175 flying in and out of Palomar will be your justification to the FAA for a new runway at Palomar, which will bring even more big aircraft. Build it, and they will come, is how the county is trying to execute their master plan, step by step. And you should know, just so that you know, access to Palomar Airport Road can never be more than it is today. Palomar Airport Road cannot be expanded, nor can El Camino Real, nor can Cannon Road. So instead of creating the convenience of a short drive and a convenient parking situation-
Thank you, ma'am. Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call the next two speakers, Vicki, I believe it's, uh, thank you, and Robert Germin.
Good morning. I'm Howard Kraus, longtime Carlsbad resident. The addition of American Airlines and now United Airlines scheduled commercial flights of 70-plus-seat jets using a B2 airport designed primarily for general aviation is an occasional convenience to some but is overwhelmingly opposed by local residents. How many more flights are coming? If and if indeed the E175 aircraft is allowed to operate under FAA Part 121 under perfect conditions with less than a fuel, full fuel tank, that doesn't necessarily make it prudent, optimally safe, or desirable. County has ignored the need for an amendment to the airport's conditional use permit with the city of Carlsbad. That requirement was affirmed in a 2021 lawsuit, and a follow-up action will be heard on the 19th. So that reason and Mayor Blackburn's letter are among the reasons why the-
I'm going to go ahead and mute you. You're well past your one minute now. Thank you, though. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Good morning. Vicki Syaj, President of Citizens for a Friendly Airport. Gentlemen, I am really disappointed. Supervisors, you've been gaslit. That entire presentation were false facts. In 2021, San Diego Superior Court issued a ruling, which the county agreed to and did not appeal. This court changes the use of Palomar Airport, which is a general aviation airport. All those FAA funds were granted under general aviation rules, not commercial rules. There is no risk to those funds. This body does not have the authority by court order to change the use of the airport without the permission of the city of Carlsbad in the form of a CUP amendment. The city of Carlsbad retains that local control. By approving this contract, you're double-downing on another illegal contract with another airline. C4FA will have no choice but to seek all legal remedies to right this wrong. We're not going away. We're in it for the long haul. We are here to ensure the county of San Diego follows the rule of law and respects court orders, even when the courts rule against them. I would hope the five of you would agree to do so as well. Thank you.
Yes, Robert's coming forward. We'll invite forward Cesar Javier and Tom Obitz.
Okay. We have increased fees for every service the county can. That's a standard operating procedure. But now we are giving a fee waiver to the airlines? The biggest airlines in the nation are making money servicing Lego land and the businesses on the coast in a downturn. But the sales pitch to us is to be happy that we can travel to Denver in the wintertime and Phoenix in the summertime. What BS? This is corporate welfare by county airports to the biggest generators of noise and pollution in the city of Carlsbad. Item five is not smart business by our county government and the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority. Implement user fees at county airports and vote no on item five. My pictures didn't come up, obviously. They weren't that good, anyway. So I got three seconds. Happy New Year.
Cesar and Purita, value analysis. We were in Carlsbad last night, and we have felt the pulse. They do not like this, this proposal of leases. Wealth getting, wealth using. Where are we going to use the money generated? Specify. And we have a distrust on the EIR literature-making, the authors of this. Who is the author of this? Los County mom? Or Mayor Gloria, who owns the Air Pollution Control District? Tell us. Where are you going to put this wealth to? Value analysis. Come on. Moral conscience. Please. Please. Wealth getting, wealth using. Okay, you get wealth using or wealth getting. Where are you going to put that money?
Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. My name is Tim Obitz. I'm here on behalf of Carlsbad, Chad Seder, a longstanding tenant at Carlsbad, well, Palomar Airport. I want to express our strong support for the item before you today. Commercial service at Palomar is a critical role in the regional airport transportation system. In United's decision to serve this airport is a clear signal that the North County deserves and can sustain convenient, accessible air service. This is good for the region, good for the airport, and good for the businesses that depend on both. As someone who previously served as the president and CEO of the National Air Transportation Association in Washington, DC for eight years and practiced aviation law, I've seen airports across the country succeed when commercial and general and business aviation coexist in balance. This county's thoughtful approach and what the, the people over here have done is spot-on. They're correct on the law. Grant Assurance 22 is clear. If people have problems with noise, it's called ANCA. It's a federal issue. You have a healthy aviation system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll call the final two remaining in-person speakers, Melissa Garrett and Isaiah Gonzalez.
Hi, thank you. I am Melissa Garrett, and I am with United Airlines. I appreciate the robust discussion about this. I won't take a lot of time here. I would just be repeating a lot of what the airport said and others, but we're looking very forward to getting back into the Palomar Airport, to servicing travelers there, and making it more convenient. This opens up over 1,000 destinations worldwide to travelers from one stop from the Carlsbad Airport to the world, both in and out. We look forward to being part of it. I'm here to answer your questions. I hope that you vote yes, and obviously, we're in support of Agenda Item Five. If there are any questions, I'll be around. Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Isaiah Gonzalez. I'm just a college student that's involved with aviation. I just want to come here on a neutral stance and simply advocate humbly for certain things I don't want to go over. Simply here, advocate for reason, dialogue, vulnerability, and understanding to see the good within our disagreements in our community. Advocate for the airport community and its business and surround the community around to break any complacency and encourage compromise within all of us to ensure that we are approaching this in the best we can. The, the reality is, the airport's going to grow. The reality is, there is some environmental concerns that we have to mitigate, but many people depend on this airport for employment, travel, hobbies, but most importantly, opportunity. Because of the airport, because of the airport community, it impacted me. I'm currently finishing up college right now to hopefully get into aviation law and environmental law, and because of the airport community and the people I've met and everyone there, they have made an impact, right? Communities like these are fundamental to our being. Examples like these are personal stories and highlight the opportunities for everyone. I simply advocate for this, and hopefully, we can all strive for a common good. Thank you all.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
I know you guys are going to pass this because, I mean, that's what you do, and you engage with these big entities that are big pollutants, and you sit and you profess that you want to save the planet, and so you are, you know, demonizing cars and getting us out of that, and I know that's the control movement, but if you really do care about the planet, don't you think adding extra planes like this and bigger commercial flights is going to cause pollution above, and that will drop down onto the people? And I think that you guys should try and find out how many planes actually leave from that airport that do chemtrails and spray above the skies that are polluting the air that we breathe, and it also toxifies the land, and it harms the living creatures that roam it. So, you know, when you guys sit here on one hand and say that you want to do that, but then you get into 20-year or more ground leases with entities that if you are moving in a direction of, of, you know, stopping the pollution, wouldn't that be something that you're going to look at, and then it's, oh?
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Hey, it's true. United shills sound like union shills. At the last Palomar Committee Chair Cliff Kaiser and a fellow board member belittled citizens and deprived their right to comment.
You know, county staff, Marali, Maas, and Martha even suggested that it's okay if recommendations don't go to you supervisors. Staff also lied by suggesting United Airlines is a done deal. Carlsbad is against it, and the county shouldn't even be hearing this until the lawsuit is dealt with. There's not even a community benefits agreement to mitigate residents' health, wealth, and peace that will be negatively affected by United. They didn't even offer one today. I think that's just everything you need to know. They're all about money. So is this board.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
All aboard. I do not want United Airlines at McClellan-Palomar. A court order requires that the county seek permission from the city of Carlsbad to change the use of Palomar Airport from general aviation to commercial, but you did not. The county needs to obey direct court order, even if it doesn't like the order. This is how democracy works. You know, that thing you praised yesterday? Power to the people. I'm glad to say that there are no bacon jets involved in this contract should, uh, it actually pass, although 7:00 a.m. and the airports are closed for residential areas. It's a bit early for aviation activity. The safety issued due to planes which might crash on landing like the recent crash at Montgomery Field, the UPS crash.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Okay, Consolon here. So, yeah, we got to be clear. This is an aviation airport, not a commercial airport, and the public has said repeatedly that they don't want a commercial operation sneaking in through deals like this. And like Mr. Javier has mentioned, you know, it's all about the money, and money for the morally unconscious, I love that, who keep trying to turn this airport into something it was never meant to be. There is no balance in this item, none. This is not a healthy aviation system. It's a quiet shift toward commercial use that the community does not want and does not support and will not benefit from at all. If the people say no, and the county keeps moving forward anyway, you know, that's just part of the agenda, and we get that, we get who they work for. And once again, money is being placed above the well-being and the will of the community, placed above the well-being and the will of the community. I'll say it again.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you all very much for participating and being here. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments to start? Your board's or Desmond?
Thank you very much. Thanks to all the speakers for coming out here today. I know this is a topic of concern for a lot of folks, but I had a few questions after hearing from the, the speakers about being a commercial airport or not a commercial airport, and I remember in the 1990s, American, United, Delta were all flying out of there, and I think at that point, Tom, those are turboprot aircraft that were much noisier. So, has the airport always been commercial? Or, I mean, I don't think it's just general aviation, but could you speak to that? Or, I mean, I don't think it's just general aviation, but could you speak to that, the comments that it's not a general aviation airport, it's, or not just a general aviation, it is commercial?
Good morning Supervisor, through the chair. The site plan, the land uses, and the conditions of approval for Palomar Airport are all spelled out in the conditional use permit that the county obtained from the city on September 24th, 1980. And in it specifically, there's a Table 1 that specifically does allow commercial aviation activities, including airlines both scheduled and non-scheduled.
Okay, so it's, that's already, and then the Embraer 175, do we have, I mean, on the noise factor, whatever, the noise scale, is, out of the aircraft that operate out of Palomar Airport right now, where is it? If 10 is the top, is the Embraer 7, 8, 11, what?
Supervisor, good question. It's not 10. We have business jets that are louder than the Embraer 175 that currently operate out of the airport. And so, relative to all the traffic that uses the airport, it's definitely not the loudest airplane.
Okay. And I guess I'd just like to, you know, make the point that we're not here to say yes or no to United, it's yes or no to the ground lease. And once an aircraft gets on a taxiway and on the runway, they're all under the discretion of the FAA, not us, not the county. And so, this is really just approving a ground lease for the use of the terminal here at Palomar Airport. And I do appreciate Gretchen, who got up and spoke, you did your homework very well, and looking at the grant assurance where, you know, we don't have to approve everybody, but if we're going to prohibit or limit a commercial operator from using the airport, there has to be such action as necessary if it limits the, if it has, if what we're doing or approving affects the safe operation of the airport. And it doesn't, I didn't hear any findings from anyone that this is, no? Thank you, this is my, no? Thank you. But...
Ma'am, please sit down. You can't, you cannot speak unless you've been recognized in the chamber. Thank you. I cannot recognize you right now. It's my colleague's turn to speak. If you, if you continue speaking, I'll have to ask you to leave. Thank you. Go ahead Supervisor Desmond.
Well, I'm just reading what you presented, the fact that, you know, if this, it causes the airport to be unsafe, and it's, I haven't heard of any findings at all that this is unsafe for the airport. And we've seen with American Airlines, you know, this is about a ground lease, and we really don't have any grounds to not allow United into the, in the airport here in Carlsbad. In fact, it would be discriminatory for us not to approve the lease with them without a qualifying safety or administrative reason. So, and like I said, I haven't seen any. And I understand the concerns of the community. Airplanes are noisy, and they can be noisy, and this airport allows operations 24 hours a day, and the voluntary noise abatement procedure is voluntary. And, you know, and so, these even noisier aircraft are allowed 24 hours, and we cannot put a curfew or restrict anybody from flying in or out of there. Some airports have curfews, Lindbergh Field does, but that was put in in the early 1990s, and since then, the FAA has not allowed any, to any airports to impose any curfews. And even with United, Palomar Airport is still only at 30% of the capacity for employments of that airport. And so, this is within the planned growth projections. I don't really see any reasons to deny. Again, this is a ground lease that we are having an agreement with to use the terminal that's already there at Palomar Airport, has nothing, we have no control over the noise or noise complaints issues. And so, with that, I'd like to make a recommendation to support the recommendations 1, 2, and 3. I'll make that a motion to approve the Agenda.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Desmond. I've just been informed that Jason is here. Sorry, for those who don't know, Jason Haber is the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs from the city of Carlsbad, and he, I would love to call him up and give him an opportunity to represent the conversations and discussions at the City Council of Carlsbad, what those conversations have looked like and tailed, has the, you know, City of Carlsbad taken any kind of position? Just let us know what's, what's the view of the people most impacted here. Thank you.
Thank you very much Chair Lawson Reamer. Jason Haber, Intergovernmental Affairs Director for the city of Carlsbad. And the board received a letter from Carlsbad Mayor Keith Blackburn regarding this item, and I just want to reiterate a few points of that. There has been quite a bit of community discussion and comment and city council deliberation on this matter. The city has expressed its concerns about the county entering into a lease with United Airlines for air operations at Palomar Airport without first obtaining an amendment to the airport's conditional use permit for the city. The city has consistently asserted its role in jurisdiction in making final land use decisions for new or expanded airport land uses, which requires the county to obtain an amendment to the airport's conditional use permit before expanding commercial operations at the airport. The county's recent actions to allow larger aircraft to operate at Palomar through American Airlines demonstrate a shift to a higher level of operations at the airport. Allowing United Airlines to operate would further demonstrate this shift. The city has offered the opinion that this reflects poorly on responsible stewardship of the airport and commitment to community engagement to identify strategies for minimizing negative impacts, and the county should therefore delay consideration of a lease with United Airlines until the county has sought and obtained an amendment to the airport's conditional use permit. The city has also expressed some concerns related to emergency response with the expansion of these commercial operations, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak here and your consideration of those concerns. Thank you very much.
Just like to ask you to stay for a moment in case anyone has any questions. I certainly, just to clarify, so the city of Carlsbad's position is, they would recommending the county not approve the ground lease at this time, is that correct?
That's correct. As you know, there's a pending lawsuit related to this expansion of service. We think that it's prudent to await the outcome of that. And again, this is relative to our CUP and the conditional use permit that governs the airport. This operational expansion is, in a sense, a first step in increasing the operating designation of the airport without prior amendment of the CUP. We think that's in violation of the CUP potentially. We would like to see the county come pursue that amendment in advance of going forward with these, with this lease agreement.
Thank you. Any, it looks like Chair Protim has questions.
My questions are for staff. Isn't it correct that the Palomar Master Plan Airport is designated as a B2?
Chair Protim, yes.
And unless we make changes to the facilities to increase it to a D3, currently, as we stand, we don't need an amendment to Carlsbad City CUP?
That is correct. County Council could weigh in if you'd like, Tom.
We agree with that. The, the provision in the use permit that's creating the confusion is a provision that reads as this, it says, "The existing designation of the airport as a general aviation basic transport airport shall not change unless an amendment to this CUP is approved by the planning commission." That term, general aviation basic transport, no longer exists. Shortly after the use permit was entered into, the FAA deleted that standard and replaced it with the current alphanumeric system or the ARC system that you're hearing. So, B2, D3, that's the ARC system. When we had litigation over this use permit, the court looked at that language and interpreted the general aviation basic transport provision to mean B2. So, you can read this provision to read as follows. "The existing designation of the airport as a B2 shall not change unless an amendment to this CUP is approved by the planning commission. There is no change in the status of the airport, the designation of the airport required as a result of the approval of this lease, or the American lease, or any other current activity at the airport. It's a B2 airport today. It will be a B2 airport tomorrow if this lease is approved."
Thank you for that clarification.
Supervisor Desmond, are your questions for Jason, or can I have him sit? Okay.
So, Jason, thank you for coming down and being here. Appreciate it. So, you said this is a first step towards potentially violating the CUP? Does this step violate the CUP?
In the city's view, the Airport Reference Code is a reflection of the size of aircraft that operate at the airport.
So, no, no, the question is, does this action violate your CUP?
I believe that's to be determined. What violates the CUP is going forward with the expansion without obtaining the amendment. So...
This is an expansion of...
Operational uses.
Which we've already determined, okay, I won't argue with, but, so I'm taking it, it doesn't violate the current CUP by taking this action today?
The number of operations occurring at the airport by larger planes is a trigger for increasing the Airport Reference Code.
So, you have a trigger, but it hasn't...
Approving this action and the flight activity is a de facto increase of the Airport Reference Code.
Well, okay, I disagree. A first step isn't a violation, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of my other colleagues have comments or thoughts? Nothing? I guess, you know, I have a couple of questions, a couple of thoughts. I think, backing a big picture, this is a really frustrating situation. It's really frustrating. I feel like it's déjà vu. You know, we were told, hey, you have to approve this lease, this ground lease for American, or you're going to lose, you know, $50 million or more of federal funding. And now, we're back again, and the idea with that was really for it to be a pilot. And I think I had huge hesitations around that approval, and we went forward with it feeling like we were threatened and backed in a hole and had no wiggle room, or we were going to lose significant federal funding. But at the time, part of the agreement was, let's put in more noise monitors so we could start to build the case to take the V out of V now. And I guess I want to just start our conversation to better understand what we've learned so far and what progress we've made on moving those voluntary noise restrictions to try to get them to be mandatory noise restrictions. Yeah, please, for the team. And I, I mean, if you could kind of, for folks who don't remember, bring people up to speed on, you know, what we did with noise monitors and what the process would be to move those restrictions from voluntary to mandatory.
Chair Lawson Reamer, thank you. Yeah, just to update the board on actions that we've taken since American started their operations earlier this year. We've installed two new noise monitors in the community, one on Bi Glass Road and then one on an industrial park east of the airport. It's a parcel that we own as the county. And so, we've got those two new monitors collecting data, and what we did, we compared noise, community noise levels from October last year to October this year, which covered a lot of the American Airlines operations. And really, the change was negligible. There wasn't a spiking increase. So, in that effect, we don't see a compelling reason to approach the FAA on mandatory restrictions. That's what they really require. And so, you know, with the information and the data we have, the noise levels didn't increase substantially.
Were those like daily averages, or did you look at the specific hours of concern, you know, before 7:00 and after 10:00?
You know, we look at the noise data with averages, CNEL, Community Noise Levels. And so, with that, you know, we also found that the community noise levels with fire trucks and lawn mowers and so forth are actually higher than aircraft noise levels surrounding the airport. And so, you know, with the data we have, we don't think there's a need to re-approach the FAA. Now, we can do that again next year, we can do the same exercise next year when United starts operations, but, Tom, anything to add to this one?
No, you're correct when you're saying that we'd have to approach the FAA. Only the FAA can establish a access restriction for a noise or a safety reason. There is a formal process established by federal regulation to do that. There's two, actually, two distinct processes. One's for the voluntary process, which is, if I remember right, 150, Part 150 process, and then the mandatory would be the Part 161, if I remember the numbers right. There are certain criteria you have to meet, including impacts to certain communities, noise levels, and then there's also an analysis of impact on interstate commerce, things like that. I would point out, the county at one time, years ago, actually asked for a mandatory restriction, so we wanted to, instead of having a voluntary noise abatement program, we started by asking for a mandatory, like a curfew. The FAA rejected that. They didn't find support for it. Now, this is years ago, before we have the new stored Stage 4 and quieter engines. So, in fact, what we're seeing is, as we've progressed in time, an aircraft has gotten more efficient and less noisy. I think what you're hearing from the airport directors, it's getting harder and harder to make a case for a mandatory restriction. So, to go through that process is expensive and time-consuming, and it's very unlikely to result in any kind of mandatory restriction.
To go through the process of petition for a mandatory restriction is expensive and time-consuming, is what you're saying?
It varies, because you have to, because you can't just submit like anecdotal evidence. The FAA won't consider like community complaints. You actually have to submit scientific data, and so, we would need to hire an expert or a consultant typically to help prepare that report and put together an analysis that the FAA could use from an evidentiary standpoint to justify a restriction.
I want to kind of put a pin in this and circle back. I think, to me, the notion that we're, we put in these noise monitors, which was a great step, but I'm most interested not in the averages over the whole day, which obviously it's like quite loud at 11:00 AM. I'm, you know, what I'm hearing from my community is concern around like the quiet time hours, right, before 7:00 and after 10:00, is the sort of core concerns and how we could better focus on gathering data on noise level impacts during those quiet hours. So, I'll put a pin in this and want to circle back. I, you know, this is, it's not only that I think we're boxed, we feel, I feel very boxed in and threatened and bullied to some extent, frankly, by the federal government about what we do in our own community. You know, I also know that there are like good reasons that you would want to have an airport that would provide convenience and access to people in North County. But that needs to be balanced with the impacts on local residents and what does it do to our community and our quality of life? And I think we're missing the balancing at this time. There's not, there's not a sufficient attention being paid to the impact on the people who live near and around the airport, and the fact that the city of Carlsbad, as a city, which is a pretty big city, 20% of my district, by the way, as a whole, is deeply concerned. I mean, that I think raises real concerns for me as well in all of this. I'd love to speak with the United representative, if they're here.
Hi. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. I think I understood from your presentation and from briefing by staff that all your proposed flight operations are scheduled within the hours of Palomar's voluntary noise abatement program, which is, in other words, between 7:00 AM, after 7:00 AM and before 10:00 PM?
That's correct.
Which I appreciate, thank you. I think I, though, am concerned that that is just what your schedule is now, and it could change, right? And so, I think what I would ask of you, wondering, is if this is to be, if the, moving forward with the ground lease was to pass today at the board, would United be willing to sign with the county a contractually binding legal agreement stipulating that United will not fly in and out of Palomar before 7:00 AM or after 10:00 AM? In other words, to put into paper and to put into a contract your existing, you know, plans, but in a way that ensures that the community can count on that not changing in the future?
Well, I certainly can't speak to the future, nor could I agree to that myself here, but I can certainly take that back and continue discussions about that and see. I mean, obviously, there are a lot of jurisdictions around where there are curfews here. I live in OB, so I appreciate, I understand the concern around noise. I've lived there for 30 years, so understand the importance sometimes of curfews. I can take that back and have the conversation, or at least start the conversation with the county, but I couldn't answer that at this moment.
Okay. I, I will say, thank you. I appreciate that. I acknowledge that that's a hard thing for you to just commit to on behalf of United here today in the middle of our hearing. But I think my, I am certainly of the position that if they're, in order for me to be able to have a path to support a ground lease, there would have to be contractually binding
to have a path to support a ground lease, there would have to be contractually binding. United would have to agree legally to not violate those 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM hours. Because if not, I mean, I acknowledge it's a, it's just a good faith hope, but there would be no binding mechanism. And if United changes its mind in the future, our board would have no recourse, you know, once the ground lease is signed. So I think that, I just appreciate that. It would be great if you could bring that back to United. I think I'm not comfortable moving forward with this in the absence of that agreement. But of course, I speak only for myself and not for my colleagues, but just wanted to put that out there. So if you want to, you're free to sit down. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. I will take that back.
Thank you. And, you know, we can continue talking to the legal team. And, you know, if this ends up moving forward at some point, it would be, I think it would make a real difference to the community to be able to count on the fact that there would be no flights before 7:00 or after 10:00.
Sure. I will take that back. And like I said, you know, we do this in a number of areas where it is mandatory, where they had those restrictions for a long time. Wherever we are in the jurisdictions, we do participate in the community. We're here, we want to be a good neighbor and, like I said, understand the concerns. We meet often in, you know, LAX, other areas with the community and with the airport board and other regulatory bodies. So we're happy to do that. That's something that I know we commit to, but I'll certainly take the concerns back.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So I think I'll just kind of, in summary, I, just kind of building on Jason's comments from Representative Carlsbad City Council, I hear you regarding the costs and challenges of pursuing mandatory noise abatement hours. I do think it's worth it. I think that our community deserves that level of advocacy and representation. And I don't think we're going to get there if we just average all the noise that's been, you know, coming in over a 24-hour period, because what we're really concerned about is the noise before 7:00 and after 10:00. So I would love us to see, you know, working, essentially kind of working with Carlsbad to work, basically to figure out what we can do with the FAA, to turn the VNA and to get the V out of the VNA. And regardless of what happens here today, I think that that's worth, work worth doing. And I think that that would be really important. And I also do appreciate the good faith efforts of United, and I hope that we can incorporate that language contractually. And if that does happen, I would be open to considering my support for the ground lease. But until that happens, I don't, I'm not able to support this today. I think the community has made it really clear that frustrated with American, and we did our best to have a pilot, and then we just kind of get hit with this again before we've made any progress on the community's noise concerns. So I think it would be, I think we should delay, or at the very least, not, I don't feel able to move forward with that, with this today. So that's just where I'm at on this. So thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I just wanted to get our legal councils, I guess, if United were even to sign an agreement with the county, it's, how enforceable would that be with the FAA looming, saying what they might say?
You mean establishing like a mandatory noise restriction by contract?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't believe that would be enforceable. Because only the FAA can establish a mandatory, like an operational restriction based on, you know, a noise concern. But I do want to say, this is a really important issue. And we've kind of addressed it in a different way in the lease, in Section 4.1. So what we have is, you know, there's the noise issue, but there's also just an operational issue. In other words, ensuring that we don't have planes stacked up, we don't have too many people in the clean room, things like that. So right now, what the lease says is that we can't have additional flights, or we can't have the movement of a flight timed by more than 45 minutes without an amendment to the lease. So there is some restriction in the lease right now to try to prevent the very thing that our chair is concerned about. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a mandatory restriction.
And if they were to, I don't know, they used to fly commercial, even though you're scheduled to be in it 9:30, sometimes you came in at 2:30, just because of weather or whatever the case may be. And even at Lindbergh, I know when I was on that board, we had, planes would take off in the middle of the night because they would weigh the fine. They'd say, that's a $10,000 fine, but we're going to take 200 people to London, and it's worth it, instead of having to put them all up in a hotel or something here. So they still get violated, unfortunately, but operations aren't always on time, as probably most of you know, in and around. But anyway, I'd actually, I think that clarification of can't move it for more than 45 minutes is pretty good, as far as before coming back for another lease agreement is pretty hefty. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Desmond and a second by the Vice Chair, Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp. Any additional comments? Okay. Seeing no requests to speak, please vote.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes with Chair Lawson Reamer voting no, all their supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate everyone from the community who came here today and your continued advocacy and engagement on this issue. And thank you, Jason, for making the trip from Carlsbad. Appreciate it. Okay. We now proceed with Items 30 to 32, which were continued from yesterday's session. We'll begin with Item 30, which is exploring county partnerships to expand affordable clean power for low-income San Diegans. This is my item. I will allow us to kind of start with public comment, to hear from members of the public, and then I'll make a couple introductory comments.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We do have six requests to speak, one individual in person, and five requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was neutral. For any individual that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. I don't see Caesar Javier in the chamber, but I'd like to call him. We'll give him a moment, maybe he's in the hallway. But Caesar Javier, if you could please come to the podium, it is your turn to speak. Okay. Not seeing Caesar come, so we will now go to our callers. We'll hear from the callers that requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will then hear a recording telling you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller. You will have two minutes to address the board.
You know, with all of your, you know, what your claims of clean energy are, it's just really sad to see that, you know, you profess that you care about the environment and people, but all of the means to extract the materials that are needed for your quote-unquote "clean energy" are toxic to the environment and to people, as we know. The Salt and Sea and all of the mining for lithium that is going on there, and the health impacts and environmental impacts. I mean, the water table, you know, gets lower because of things like that when they're using fresh water to mine for lithium. And then we're being given back sewer water and reclaimed water, and, you know, there's just not enough. And, you know, you'll let the water out into the ocean and things like that, but, you know, when it really comes to like the bare necessities, you like, don't really think about people in that. And so, you know, with San Diego set to be, you know, making 325 million lithium bombs, it's like, you guys want to put all these vessels around and things like that? And we already know the fires that they have caused and are unable to be put out. And so as you increase this type of infrastructure, it is not only detrimental to the environment, but to people as well. So, you know, I think you need to be doing some kind of a study, like you guys were planning on doing that as far as these vessels go, and like making sure that they weren't going to be, you know, harmful. But I feel like you guys go ahead and just cut through the red tape and, you know, wind up putting it through, and, you know, then people have to suffer the consequences. I think that it's negligent for the county to want to be engaging in that type of a battery infrastructure and then putting it all over the place, all while it's causing harm to the environment and the people that are in those areas. And we're, you know, taking our good water and we're using it for that. So I think there needs to be some more data to be collected to make sure that even...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
All aboard. It looks like you're still silencing people by announcing items carried over to the next day at the last minute. I mean, it was a quick announcement yesterday. Great idea to use the DACGT program, and I hope it can be a greater discount than 20%. But the average cost of solar panels for a 2,000-square-foot house seems to be 11,000. And the average cost for a 500-kilowatt installation, which is the smallest available under the SD, Community Power DACGT program, would be about $1,229,000. It could probably service about 100 homes. The good news is that you can be within five miles of an eligible community, which is about half the county. This installation would cover 36,000 square feet, which would be nowhere near 1.2 million. So where would the rest of the money come from? The board letter doesn't say, perhaps because you can't afford it. The CEO should give us the cost, and who would finance this before you waste time and money on this? And the CPUC runs seven similar programs, which I think gets the CEO to look up rather than just this one SD, Community Power DACGT program, which sounds quite simple.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Okay, it's true. So first thing, right off the bat, voting for dirty community power is an automatic conflict of interest when both Tara and Mamela chaired, or chair, that corrupt progressive board. It is also a lie that Community Power offers lower rates like they advertise. And it's interesting, because they somehow have tons of money to spare, just like SDGNE, to waste out commercials and various events that they sponsor, and I know it's for the community. No, that, what that does is that raises rates, actually, because they're going to make up for that expenditure. They also rely on non-recyclable solar panels as one of the many dirty forms of energy. And I ask, why do these progressives support tariffs? What hypocrisy! I do not support the corrupt California Public Utility Commission's disadvantaged communities' green tariff program. It's not even convenient to say the name of that program. Us do not support the theft of public county land to benefit big corporate solar companies. These hypocritical progressives can't even offer environmental protections for the non-recyclable solar panels, because as always, it's all about money. This is about usurping some of the control that SDGNE, PG&E, has over this county and state, taking a little piece of the pie, but not stopping the corrupt system that exists that keeps rates high. See, everybody knows what's going on, rather, no matter what political side people are on, people can see what's going on. And moving this item to today's meeting, which is a separate meeting, is a form of disenfranchisement of public input. I actually feel threatened and bullied by the state government to support items that enable air pollution, lithium fire pollution, a lack of recycling of solar panels, and battery energy storage fire facilities dumped into people's neighborhoods. How dare you?
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Jen LeBron, the Director of Public Affairs for San Diego Community Power, your local not-for-profit agency that is proud to serve nearly 1 million customers across the unincorporated areas of San Diego County, as well as the cities of Chula Vista and Sanitas, Imperial Beach, La Mesa, National City, and San Diego. We provide clean renewable energy and programs that support affordability and the clean energy transition. San Diego Community Power administers the California Public Utility Commission-funded disadvantaged communities' green tariff program under the name of SolarAdvantage. SolarAdvantage funds local, new-build, small-scale solar projects in or near disadvantaged census tracts and enrolls income-eligible households in 100% renewable power while providing a 20% discount on their energy bills. Community Power has been allocated 20 megawatts for this program, making it the largest allocation in the state, with the potential to serve up to 9,000 low-income households and provide them with discounts they deserve. We appreciate Chair Lawson Reamer prioritizing this program and introducing this item to cultivate additional collaboration with county staff to support low-income households' access to affordable, clean power, and wish to express our unwavering support for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
It's amazing how much money you're making off this grid. Bothered my mind, because you want to push lithium batteries, you want us to go ahead and put these in there. There is no real way to put those fires out. You know that. You can't really drown them out, because water makes it go friggin' more. You need to use the gas to go to do it. Yet, there's other technology, which is carbon-based batteries. They charge faster, work better, and you don't have those fire issues. But the reason why you don't want to go ahead and go into these types of measures is because, you know, you don't get money from the lithium market, right? You don't get money from the cobalt market, right? You want recycled plastic because you won't get money from the oil market, right? Is that really what you guys are down to? That all you're looking for is money? You guys say it all the friggin' time. You don't care about us. You just care about the money and how much you could siphon off of it. Isn't that the real big deal with you guys? I mean, clearly, everyone could see the corruption. Going to be in the hot seat when all this stuff comes down. Are you really going to stick to your guns on that? To me, I think that's stupid. But to each his own. I personally don't understand it. You're not standing for anything good, because you don't, you're turning your back to the people. And that's who you work for. You don't work for these NGOs. You don't work for these lobbying groups. You work for the people. And if you don't recognize that soon, things are going to probably end up, most likely, getting worse. I'm just begging you to hook up the...
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll take a moment to just provide a little bit of context. And as we, as you all know, I represent our county on San Diego Community Power. And so there's been a lot of work that we've been doing on San Diego Community Power to really try to tackle these challenges around affordability, and particularly with energy costs. And affordability with energy costs is really a core issue that so many people in our region are struggling with. And we know that these costs, not only are they too high today, the wildfire mitigation cuts, the federal, the significant federal cuts to our clean energy program, the emerging development of AI data centers, all threaten to drive up costs. So this partnership that I'm bringing forward really began in 2021 to try to just chip away at this issue of affordable energy access. And we have made some progress at San Diego Community Power. We've lowered rates in both 2024 and 2025 and are now charging less than SDGNE for most customers. But there is more we can do... But there is more we can do as a county government to partnership, to partner with San Diego Community Power, especially for energy burdened households. So there is a really exciting program that we have moved forward at San Diego Community Power, but it's needs support from all of our various jurisdictions, including the county, for it to really realize its potential. So this is called the Disadvantaged Communities Green Tariff Program. It's the DACGT. And what the DACGT does, it funds small-scale solar installations in disadvantaged communities and provides low-income households with a 20% discount on their power. So currently, we're on track for about 10,000 low-income San Diegans to benefit from this program, and obviously, we would like to expand this significantly. It's a good program. I mean, it's actually frankly, a great program. We're looking at both discounts of 20% to individuals in terms of the utility bills and also support for small-scale solar installations within disadvantaged communities. There are a lot of solar developers who are interested in participating in this program, primarily because there's state support to invest in the solar installations. Apologies to my colleagues, it's a lot of context. I just want to make sure you guys have full context of what we're talking about. The challenge is that the solar developers who want to participate have been struggling to identify leasable sites because there's a lot of specifications that need to be met in order to meet the requirements of the DACGT program. So what we spoke about and agreed at San Diego Community Power about a month ago is that all of us representing various jurisdictions would go back to our respective boards and jurisdictions to see if all of our jurisdictions could basically do a better job of being partners, of trying to help identify some of the sites or sites that would be necessary for solar panels. So this, I think, speaking directly to Supervisor Anderson, would probably frankly, primarily benefit folks in the unincorporated areas at this time because that's where we have more land use jurisdiction, but it could have broader impacts depending on if we have county-owned sites in other parts of the county. Just wanted to kind of set that out. I know the city of San Diego is also looking, trying to look for sites. I know the city of Chula Vista is looking for sites as well. So this is my proposal I'll bring to you, asking if we can do our small part for clean power. And the purpose of this item is just to ask the county to inventory our potential eligible sites on county property or within our land use jurisdiction and coordinate with Community Power to make that information available to developers, so developers could at least be aware of those sites to consider for possible DACGT projects. So with that, if there's any questions for my colleagues, it's a, in a way, it's a small item, but trying to do our part as part of a regional partnership towards more affordable energy for, especially for most disadvantaged communities in San Diego County. Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. I'm very open to looking at this. I do have some concerns, and if moving forward, I want those concerns to be addressed. In the case of Akamba Hot Springs, where we built that huge array of solar for other communities because they didn't receive any of it, giving them solar, their homes were built at a time where the electricity may or may not have existed. And so to go back, they can't put solar on their roof because they would have to upgrade the entire house. You know, what I was pushing for with the solar array was to give them one set of battery storage and let them draw off the battery storage with the current things that they have. So when they're looking at low-income housing and how we address it, how we get the highest return, which is achievable, many of those homes are too old. Even in my home, when I had solar, I had to upgrade my panel, which was very expensive.
Let me just clarify, it's worth clarifying. This program is not primarily to put solar on individual house roofs. It's to find like spots within communities to build like much smaller scale solar generation projects that then could be used as a source of electricity using existing infrastructure in households. I love to have solar on my roofs, but you're totally right. It's not feasible in a lot of cases, in any case, but that's not what this program does, even though I think that's a different program that would be good. But that's not what the DACGT is. It's about looking for county sites or places where we have authority and where could you build projects that then that power could be used to power people's homes, not putting solar on the roof or requiring any kind of upgrades. And you're, the other piece, just to respond, the purpose of the DACGT, it's these small projects. So you get the energy if the project's in your neighborhood. So that issue that you raised where you're having this huge solar farm, basically, where it's powering folks outside of the neighborhood and impacting people in the neighborhood, but they're not getting the benefit of the less expensive energy, this is a very different model of a program.
I understood that, but I was telling you where I was at.
Okay.
And we start down this road and then it evolves. So I think it's better to present my. The other part is, if we looked at multi-use homes, perhaps apartment complexes, condos, things like that, it may be a better fit to start with solar on top of those facilities because many of them have parking structures that are outside that solar could go on top of their parking structure, so it can go on the roof, so it can go in a lot of places. So I don't think we should limit our view of just county land, unincorporated land. I think we should start thinking in terms of looking at where we get the highest return, right? This is about making lower power more accessible and affordable for people in the community. And so I just, I wanted to bring those points forward because we're talking about it in a narrower view than what I'd be willing to accept. And I think that there's more opportunity, especially in some of those poorer communities, to have covered parking. Many of them have open parking and we could add covering with the solar, the battery, and not changing the electricity, but simply have them something to draw on. That's my two cents worth.
I appreciate that. And if, you know, I agree, actually. I think it's pretty, it feels very intuitive that if you have multifamily housing and there's a covered parking, that like, let's start there and let's put some solar panels on a roof in addition, not instead. You know, I'm happy to, I agree, like, let's do both.
Every project that we've tried to build county-related, it's been far too expensive. We start with a homeless project that's supposed to be 60 grand and turns out to be 600,000, or it turns out to be 6 million. I'm thinking those other locations, if incentivized, may be more cost-effective. And I think the quicker we move, the more affordable it is to others.
I guess this is for David. If I just specify my intent here would be to include also looking at more broadly at those kinds of properties, would that be sufficient or do we need a formal amendment? I don't mean to put you on the spot. You can circle back. We can continue. I think Supervisor Desmond had some comments and then we can circle back to County Council. Please go ahead. Supervisor Desmond.
Similar type concerns as Supervisor Anderson had. Most of these sites are going to be in unincorporated areas that are available for large scale or any sort of scale of solar. And one of the things that, and I think you have it in your board letter, my binder's still in my office, but is that those communities need to have benefit. They need to, you know, if they're going to have the whatever, the ISO or whatever it is, or their community areas around them, and they're going to look at all these solar panels and not get any benefit out of them, I think that's, you know, something we absolutely have to do. And I don't, is that part of what you're asking for? Was it the 20% or what you had?
Yeah, so that's helpful. I appreciate the clarifying question. I acknowledge I spoke for a while because I wanted to give everyone full context. This program is really specific that if the sole, it's one, very small-scale projects. It's a whole bunch of little projects, not any big projects. It's a whole bunch of little projects. And secondly, it specifies that the individuals who would receive that energy and therefore the 20% discount are the ones that are near the project. So there's one moving forward already. Probably going to, I'm now a little bit confused, there's been so many proposed, but I think it's in, fairly certain it's in Barre Logan, and it's the families that live nearby that will get the energy.
All right. I just kind of, kind of lit up because I've heard complaints from the unincorporated areas when they get large projects that they don't get the benefit.
Yeah, and I want to just comment on that. I agree. I think we, I'm very concerned. It's not just solar or any kind of particular type of project. Anytime that we have a major development project that has broad regional community benefits, but it imposes like specific costs on the community that lives nearby, we really need a better framework to like ensure, to mitigate those impacts, ensure that the community receives those benefits. And we had this discussion, as I'm, you know, at least the two of you remember, four years ago. And the result, we talked length about Akamba and how do we structure community benefits? And we do now have at the county a community benefit agreement policy, but it is not, in my opinion, robust. I think it is like weak, and I would definitely support us revisiting it. I think that's a completely unrelated conversation to today because this program inherently focuses on those local community benefits, but I just want to acknowledge, I think that there's like another conversation to be had that is a valid conversation.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure for the unincorporated folks.
County Council.
Chair Lawson Rimmer, members of the board, yes, you could amend into the, into the recommendation direction to add, to direct the chief administrative officer to look at other opportunities as well, including rooftop solar and things like that as part of the report back.
I think that's, that is great. It's fine. Does that meet your needs or your concerns, Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. That's fine. So with that, I'd like to make a motion. Any other comments? Okay, thank you so much, Chair Prota Magiri.
Thank you, Chair. I just want a quick comment regarding SDGNE. Their rates have been doubling since 2013, and we have one in four customers already behind on payments. So we know that the people that suffer the most are working families and low-income households. Inland neighborhoods facing extreme heat and families already choosing between paying their rent or keeping the lights on. So I really appreciate you bringing this forward and exploring opportunities to just alleviate the cost of living that everybody in San Diego is feeling right now. And so you have my full support. I'm happy to second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Okay, please vote.
And Chair Lawson Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, let's move on to Discussion Item 31, Update on the Countywide Food Contract. Brian, your team has a presentation? Your team has a presentation? Fantastic. Okay.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Rimmer and members of the board. Today's item is an update on the county food contract with Cisco Foods in alignment with Board Policy B75, which is sustainable, equitable, and local food sourcing. Your board has established the county as a leader in the area of food systems change. As a large jurisdiction working to change institutional food systems with diverse populations, we are leveraging this contract with a global food supplier to implement the board policy. Joining me today is Dr. Liz Hernandez, who will share more later in the presentation on our progress in advancing the six value categories of B75, which are local sourcing, equity-informed sourcing, elevated labor standards, organic or regenerative certification, low-carbon intensity, and nutritional co-benefit. The countywide food contract is used primarily by Edgemore Nursing Facility and Sheriff Detention Facilities. Annual spending through this contract is approximately $12 million. Through B75, values-based food sourcing considers principles in addition to cost when deciding which food items to purchase. The Cisco contract is a key strategy under this policy, helping county food service operations access more items that meet these value categories. Overall, we're seeing stability during the first year of Cisco's contract. Cisco's on track with the action plan goals shared in our May board update, and those resources and programs have come online throughout the first year of their contract. The data tracking and evaluation was moved in-house to the Office of Evaluation, Performance, and Analytics, and this will support developing future data-driven goals. Inherently, there are some competing factors that our nutrition programs have to balance among value categories, including cost, population needs, and regulatory requirements. However, we've learned that some strategies can actually be complementary. For example, red meat and processed meat are expensive, and changing menus to reduce the amount purchased supports management of costs and opportunities to purchase items qualifying in other value categories. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Hernandez, who will share more details about the work in each of the value categories.
Thank you, Brian. Local sourcing focuses on products grown or processed within 250 miles and sourced from family or cooperatively owned operations. During the most recent fiscal year, over 300,000 was spent from local suppliers. DPC and Cisco are continuing to incorporate regional growers into the Cisco catalog to expand local sourcing. What we have learned is that for small producers, volume of items needed because of the scale of programs, especially detentions, and packaging requirements can be a challenge. The county is providing technical assistance to help local suppliers meet county requirements. Cisco continues to share production location information to better identify and track local producers, and we expect to see improvement in this value category as production location information improves. Also, Cisco collaborates on monthly highlights of local crops and food to county sites for menu planning and ordering purposes through a Harvest of the Month newsletter. Equity-informed sourcing prioritizes products from local businesses owned by socially disadvantaged or small to mid-size farms. The county increased spend in this category by almost $400,000. Cisco is engaging suppliers at meet equity-informed criteria, including farms owned by historically underserved entrepreneurs, which supports more equitable procurement. Enhanced vendor data transparency provided by Cisco has been key. By clearly showing where products come from and making supply data accessible, departments can identify gaps, match suppliers with demand, and include underrepresented producers in purchasing decisions. Additionally, Cisco launched a B75 Order Guide, which highlights suppliers and products that align with the six value categories, helping food service operators, including the sheriff's office in Edgemore, plan menus and advance equitable sourcing, as well as other value categories. Elevated labor standards ensure suppliers follow robust social responsibility policies. The contract with Cisco requires suppliers to follow labor standards, including nondiscrimination, wage and hour protection, and prohibitions on involuntary labor. Cisco extends these requirements to their suppliers and conducts compliance reviews. To ensure consistent accountability, DPC is working with the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement to develop verification and reporting product protocols and a procurement compliance dashboard to centralize labor standards data and strengthen oversight across the supplier network. Organic or regenerative certification highlights products that are grown in ways that are better for the environment. The sheriff's office has made gains by working with vendors supplying certified organic foods. Cisco and the county will continue identifying priority organic and regenerative product lines and expanding catalog options while supporting growers with procurement and logistics to meet volume and packaging requirements. We have found we have room to grow in our engagement with medium and small-scale producers. They may do best through cooperative models so that they can collectively meet the volume and scale that the programs need and leverage their negotiating position together. Low-carbon intensity reflects the pounds of CO2 emissions per meal, calculated using a carbon footprint based on quantities of animal products purchased. Overall, red and processed meat purchases decreased. At the same time, purchases of fruits, vegetables, legumes, and minimally-processed grains have. At the same time, purchases of fruits, vegetables, legumes, and minimally-processed grains have increased, supporting plant-forward menu planning and lower carbon intensity. The county will continue to shift purchasing to reduce the climate impact of meals and align with the county's 2024 Climate to Action Plan. Nutritional co-benefits focus on foods that support health and well-being. County food services are increasing visibility of healthy foods through the nutritional co-benefit value category, which Cisco highlights through their One Planet, One Table program. Red and processed meat purchases decreased, shifting toward poultry, lean proteins, and plant-based options. The sheriff's office made gains in reducing sodium and added sugar, offering healthier beverages and using low-sodium dressings. Edgemore reduced animal product use, carbon and water footprints per meal, revised menus to cut red meat by 10%, added Meatless Mondays, and included more fruits and vegetables using local and organic items when available. I'll now, I'll now turn it back to Brian, who will share how the team will continue advancing the six value categories.
Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. Complete production location data, which includes where the items are grown, produced, or manufactured, is essential for understanding our progress in the value categories. Under the new contract, Cisco is required to continue to improve how this data is collected. Cisco's made strong progress, increasing the percentage of records with complete production information since the program's first year, and surpassing the national average last fiscal year. The county is partnering with Cisco and community organizations to continue our coordinated engagement efforts. We created a supplier directory of local businesses to identify potential vendors and to broaden participation. We're also launching a supplier training series that helps local growers, producers, and small distributors understand procurement requirements and align with the six value categories. Through technical assistance programs offered by the Office of Economic Development and Government Affairs, small businesses will receive support in navigating the county's procurement process. And we continue to strengthen the partnerships with local stakeholders, including the Farm Bureau, Fresh Point, and the San Diego Food Hub. Looking ahead, we will explore specialty contracts and cooperative ordering pools to increase access to value-aligned products. As an example, we've identified both dairy and bakery as two high-opportunity categories, and Cisco is pursuing suppliers with value-aligned offerings in these areas. We're helping departments with updating menus and operations to align with Board Policy B75, including increasing local and organic offerings and reducing red meat. Supplier support will continue as our team and Cisco work with partners like the Food Hub and Farm Bureau to help Cisco grow its organic and regenerative product lines. And Public Health Services will continue leading the overall program efforts, while the Office of Evaluation, Performance, and Analytics will help us develop data-driven goals, improve transparency, and performance monitoring tied to the B75 value categories. In closing, I'd like to express gratitude to the many departments that are collaborating to ensure success for this initiative, in addition to the buying departments. This includes agriculture, weights and measures, AWEPA, economic development, labor standards, purchasing, and sustainability and environmental justice. I'd also like to recognize Todd Olson, Cisco's regional manager, who oversees this contract and is here, along with the rest of our team members, and are happy to answer any questions that you may have. That completes the presentation.
Thank you very much. I have a lot of questions, but I would like to hear from the public first. So if any of my colleagues, I see Chair Protimagiri. Go ahead.
That was an old holdover from the last item. I have comments, though, but I can wait until after.
You're, whichever you prefer.
After, after.
Okay. So we'll go to public comment, and then I'm sure there'll be questions for y'all. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Lawson, Ramar. We do have six total requests to speak, all coming via phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did receive two e-commerce comments on this item. One was in opposition. For any individuals that did request to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will hear from those that have requested us speak by phone, and just as a reminder, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
You guys also contracted Cisco for Palinsky Center, your detention centers for children, San Pascual. And it's interesting to hear you talking about how you want to ensure that, you know, you're going to be making health and safety and, and that the food company follows all of these rules and regulations, but you guys haven't addressed the sexual assault that's happening at those centers, the abuse of children that's happening at those centers. So it seems like you're more concerned about food. And I mean, yeah, that's nice and all, but like, why can't we address the other things that go on at those centers where you're providing the food? Because it's negligent to, you know, not address those things and be more concerned about providing food than providing actual safety for the children to make sure they're not being physically, mentally, and sexually abused. And I mean, children have even died in those, those centers. So, you know, it's just, it's very telling to see the way that you guys work when you are presented with things that, you know, you refuse to acknowledge, because those are things that you should be having a presentation on to show us what you're doing to mitigate it. Instead, you guys claim to transform these different agencies because of things that happen of abuse and deaths of children like Arabella, and you, you know, you just kind of brush it over like it's not a big deal, and then you say you care about children. But it's, the proof is in your actions. We see what you are selling because, you know, the children have to reap that, because you guys are, you know, don't really care. It's about money and it's about other things. You don't, you know, care to make sure that they are not being traumatized, not being abused, you know? And that's what you claim you're doing, but when people really can see, they'll see that you, you don't, you care more about food and getting money contracts and things like that.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
The board letter suggests that there is progress, so let me highlight one of the airlines. The business impact statement says pilot efforts such as integrating strawberries from a local producer show how regional farms can be integrated to large-scale food operations. How about that? Integrated strawberries probably should be in the equity statement. Oh, by the way, without the attached update, it's hard to assess if any real progress has in fact been made. But here are a few ideas from the presentation now that you do it at the last minute. Local sourcing within 250 miles doesn't sound very local to me, and is the mockery of your commitment to local small businesses. It's kind of weird that if Cisco has so much data and computer systems showing where things are grown, that it cannot narrow down the local suppliers to in-county suppliers. And organic sounds like, kind of like a balanced thing, more of a less fruit, if I recall correctly. I mean, I think, you know, organic is a good and viable option. I think it should be done in all cases, all here. Organic and non-GMO. Not sure I like reducing red meat either. Personally, I like a wide variety of meats, and again, I think that's probably held here for people on, not on a vegetarian or vegan diet. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Elevated labor standards to benefit the grifters. Plant-forward, weighted CO2 per anti-meat meal, racist equity-informed sourcing. It's like, I mean, what happened to the old food pyramid nobody ever recognized? Meatless Mondays to deprive people of proper nutrition and maximize profit. That's what it's really about. Balancing gobbledygook categories for cost. You know, it's almost like this board has found every way possible to increase costs to primarily feed inmates. Major corporation Cisco benefits big time. Their assets are worth 26.8 billion with a B. Another successful Texas-based business out of Houston. And their One Planet, One Table line, you know, it's almost like a United Nations slogan to make a monopoly contract sound fun. Good luck to local mom-and-pop companies getting an opportunity to make some money in the county that they work in, especially when it comes with the agenda is to actually starve people, including foster children under the county's, I can't even say care, supervision or lack thereof, you know? Interesting. Shame, shame on that, you know? Plant-forward, that's one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard. And my diet, by the way, is very similar to Manwell's. So that's telling you something. When I don't approve of what, what your menu consists of, I want people to have the nutrition that they need. Let's talk about individualized meals. You want to use some fancy terminology. Talk about that, what people need specifically for their diet.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Just waiting for the system to respond.
Okay, Gonzalo here, and aim on to all the previous concern citizens. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Fine, can you hear me?
I can, yeah. Perceived the comments.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, Cisco is the world's largest food service distributor, and the scale is exact, and that scale is exactly the problem. Their business model is built on volume, not nutrition. Too much of what passes for food and modern distribution is industrial, industrially-produced, highly-processed, and sourced through global supply chains that put profit above community health. Imagine that. When we contract with a giant like Cisco, we outsource our food. You own, you know this already. Okay. So there are concrete reasons for concern. Here we go. Cisco has documented history of food safety recalls and regulatory settlements, including recalls tied to serious pathogens, and a multimillion-dollar settlement with California over improper practices. They've been tied up in antitrust litigation over alleged fixing, price fixing in the meat supply chain, and public records show labor and compliance violations at regional operations. These are not theoretical problems, they're real. Documented failures in stewardship and accountability. And so we have a family, we have farmers and family-run businesses right here in our county who can supply fresher, more nutritious food, support local jobs, and keep dollars circulating within our own economy. Choosing them would reduce transport emissions, because you guys care so much about the carbon footprint, right? Yeah, right. Improve traceability and resist the industrial model that strips soil and reduces real food quality over time. And that's another thing. I mean, there's absolutely nothing that's truly organic because our soils have been depleted of minerals and everything else, so whatever, okay. If the county truly cares about public health.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
You know, if you create a problem, it gives you ability to take control over other organizations, businesses. You're basically, you're trying to, it's just funny. It really is hilarious when you take a look at how simple it is, and, you know, everyone says, "Track the money." Yeah, no, you could track it straight to the top. You could track the lawyers, you could track basically the nonprofit groups all the way down, and you could line each one up and say, "Yeah, it's a good cause." But you line them up right next to each other, and it's amazing, you see entirely different picture. You, you see the direction we're going, right? We're going to go ahead and swap out like the medical field with the AIs. That's what we're going to do, right? But we need more energy so that we can go ahead and get that done, right? And you already got rid of all the quality people when you did that whole Uber thing back in 2000, right? When you got rid of all the good contractor work, they're like, you know what? Hell is that? I'm out of here. I'm not going to be employed by someone in California. So they got the hell out of here. The truck drivers all bounced. So now we're just left with low-quality people, right? Because all the quality people left California because you want to steal from them. You don't want to give them the ability to actually do something great here, because if they try to do something great, you need to take that from them, right? I mean, that's, that's how it's been going on for how many years, and especially ramped up in the last five when you went all off on the election and said, you know, we really don't care how many people cheat. We'll cover it up.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chair Lawson, Ramar, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I just kind of want to start with some introductory comments, mostly for my colleagues. This item was a sort of a follow-on to something I brought a while ago, so I think it'd be helpful to give context to, to, to folks. And I also have a bunch of concerns in terms of where we're at. So it was, I don't know, a long time ago now, three years, four years, something like that. And I had, we received a ton of outreach from our local agricultural community saying, "Hey, you know, we're a huge agricultural region, but the county doesn't buy anything from us." Like, county doesn't buy, doesn't buy local. We're buying tons of, of products that are packaged and, you know, covered in plastic and processed and shipped from like, who knows where. And we're not supporting our local agricultural economy. And also got outreach from the folks who, who work in our fields and said, you know, we could do better. We could have better labor standards in terms of how we think about ensuring that, you know, people are not exploited, people aren't working horrible, horrible, inhumane hours when they're producing food for our county and then ending up on public assistance and on benefits because we're paying so poorly and paying so badly that they can't make ends meet for their family. And at the same time, there was a lot of conversations among people really concerned about the impact of pesticides and runoff in our oceans and how the pesticides are essentially, you know, when we look at stormwater and what is in the stormwater and why stormwater is so toxic after it rains and why it's polluting, you know, our beaches, our coastlines, but also our lakes, our rivers, like our waterways, why nobody can go anywhere after it rains, and why there's so much pollution. Pesticides are a huge part of it. There's also, you know, some runoff that's, that comes from oil from cars, et cetera. But it was the fertilizers and the pesticides that are, are causing a lot of the growth of, of plants and animals that are not indigenous, that are eating other plants and animals that are not indigenous, that are disrupting our ecosystem and causing also a lot of health impacts for, for people across San Diego County. So these are sort of the three concerns. And a coalition of stakeholders came together and said, "Hey, we could do better. We serve 20,000 meals, I think, a month here at the county. Why are we not using our purchasing power as, as a county to buy more local, to encourage and support our local agricultural economy, and at the same time, encourage farming practices that don't have hugely awful health impacts on our communities? And at the same time, making sure that people get paid a living wage and are treated fairly and are not, you know, exploited in our fields?" So that was a big coalition effort with a lot of stakeholder engagement that resulted in a countywide food purchasing contract policy that at the time I did not think was as robust or as binding as I would have hoped, but we thought of it as at least a step in the right direction that had a number of values embedded them in it around local the right direction that had a number of values embedded them in it around local contracting, local purchasing, expanding local purchasing around like lower impact, more healthy environmental practices that wouldn't have such negative health impacts on our community and also labor standards. So that was what was adopted at the time. And then when the, this policy was implemented, the only entity that won the contract was not, you know, I think my vision or my kind of anticipation was once we put this policy in place, then some local farms would be competitive in providing food for the county and that they would be in a better position if I had food. But in the end, actually, the entity that won was Cisco, was the only entity that like received the contract. And I want to tie this, I know I'm talking a lot, but I'm just trying to get everyone up to speed, to a lot of the efforts that have been led by the vice chair, by Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp, who's really focused on the disadvantages that our local businesses face and minority-owned businesses, local businesses face, that when you're trying to compete for contracts with the county and you're kind of competing against big firms that have a whole department whose job it is to write proposals and you might be better at your job, you might be actually the ones out there doing the work in the community, but because you're busy doing the work in the community, you don't have, you know, a whole department whose job it is to write proposals to win county contracts and county bids. And I think we've made some progress and probably more to be made on how do we do a better job as a county in supporting those small local businesses and small local contractors and kind of creating pathways. That structure was not in place when Cisco won this bid. I don't know that it would have prevented Cisco from winning the bid, but I wanted to connect the dots here because the intent of the policy was to give a leg up to our local farms and our local producers, but in the end, the best written proposal won instead of necessarily the proposal that actually represented our local communities in providing these goods and services. So that's where we are with all of this. And I think I would be safe to say is I'm like very unhappy. There was a lot of work by stakeholders to try to put together a framework that prioritized health of our community, prioritizing health of environment, prioritizing like our local economy, local purchasing, local agriculture, treating our workers more fairly. And instead, what we have here is a contract with this giant conglomerate Cisco where the percent of procurement locally has not grown from this year to the year before. It's super low still. It's 2.5%. So this is not acceptable. And, you know, I think we could kind of try to unpack, like, why is that? But I think it's certainly a piece of it is that we have a problem with our procurement and contracting process that incentivizes these polished big contractors over smaller local businesses. But I think another piece of it is that we need better accountability and better benchmarks to say, hey, you know, this is, these are the goals of the program and we really need to see progress year over year. The one thing I think that went right, at least, in putting together this food policy was we did say that the contract has to come back each year as an option. So that was intentional because I thought it maybe wasn't going to work, so wanted it come back before the board. So here we are. So this board policy is back before the board to be, for the option to be renewed because we wanted to make sure there were like board touchpoints and it didn't just get like forgotten. So I think, you know, we have to decide, do we continue with this option? What do we want to do about it? Do we need to, you know, put in place more robust benchmarks and expectations if the Cisco contract is going to be renewed next year, if we do decide to go forward with this today? I do know that a number of new local purchasing programs have just launched, but it's not clear, to be frank, whether they're going to actually increase local or equity-focused sourcing. I think that the labor improvements are probably the most solid thing that has materialized, but this like a fundamental goal of shifting spending to local producers has not happened. So I have like some thoughts on, you know, how we could use this as an opportunity to do better by all of those values, but I really wanted to, I know that this was invisible to some extent in the way that the briefing was written. It was not obvious of what was going on here. And I wanted to just get my colleagues up to speed and create an opportunity for like a proper discussion before moving forward with any proposals. And I will certainly say I'm like very unhappy. This is just, there was so much stakeholder outreach to try to do something meaningful and we just have more business as usual, except with like a greenwash name. So with that, I will turn the floor to Chair Protem Pilamaygar.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first I want to start off with thanking our staff for all your work and the presentation. I also appreciate your comments, bringing context to this conversation. I obviously am the newbie on the blog, so I wasn't aware of this that you just mentioned. I guess my question has to do more with the ability to distribute. And now knowing that this is something that comes back to us on an annual basis, I do see an opportunity to source locally. The sourced, locally sourced foods do seem obviously low and we've seen a decrease since 23, 24. So does Cisco have the ability to source locally? That's my question because, I mean, I know they do, but to the chair's point, you know, there was this robust stakeholder engagement and discussion and sharing of priorities, but how would that work? Like, do we have, do they have the ability to distribute to the points that we need that food to go to?
Yeah, well, to source from the local producers, yeah. And I would, I think we have to ask Brian, but I think that's kind of the issue. Certainly in their proposal, they said they did, but sometimes proof is in the pudding, which is the problem.
And that's where I want this discussion to go towards, right? How do we implement accountability measures or, you know, ensuring that we have disadvantaged businesses at the table and engaged and local farms? I know we have a food desert down in South Bay. I don't need to go into that. And we know that food is a social determinant of health. And I just got back from Japan and I'll give a whole presentation at next month's meeting, but, you know, their population over the age of 65 is 30% and by 2050 it'll be twice that. And they put a lot of attention and investment in what they eat, including low-sodium foods and plant-based foods, which especially in minority communities make a huge difference because some minority communities already predisposed to cardiovascular disease and diabetes and other types of ailments that shorten the lifespan. So for me, it's incredibly important. So I do want to see how we could address some of these issues that the chair raised right now.
Superintendent Montgomery Stapp.
I will be brief because during our briefing on this, I had several questions. Thank you for getting back to my staff members on that. And thank you for the presentation and the work. And, you know, I think that, you know, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, when you've done something a certain way for decades upon decades, then it takes a little while, one, for the county to begin that shift, but also for community members, business owners to begin that shift because it's not the easiest thing going into county procurement, right? And so I think that is the larger issue that we've been working on, that staff has been working on and that this board obviously is very interested in for all of our smaller businesses, veteran-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, all of those different categories that at the end of the day are very ambitious and risk-takers and are willing to make a lot of sacrifices to have their own businesses. So I just, you know, that as a backdrop, I do understand where we are now, but also agree that I did ask specific questions about who do we, does Cisco actually have contracts with? How many businesses? What is the dollar amount, right? So when we're looking at a contract this large and then kind of coming back with, we have, you know, the San Diego Food Hub and that's kind of it, right? That is a local, small-scale local supplier that, you know, of course has 36, I believe, small growers and farmers within that hub, more than we had before. But, you know, the question will be and is, how do we even increase that number, right? So the only additional question I have that you all have, that I haven't asked yet, that all the ones that I did ask, you did answer, so thank you for that. But in the board letter, it does state, you know, that there is extensive outreach and training for small and diverse local suppliers, helping more than 500 growers and food businesses understand how to participate in county procurement. What exactly does that look like? What is our outreach plan? Does it include technical assistance? Is it just kind of setting up, you know, shop and a tent somewhere and saying, hey, we're here, you know, we're trying to engage smaller businesses and with our food contracts? What was done for that outreach?
Chair, Chair Protem and Vice Chair, I'm going to ask a couple of our team members to come up and specifically address the outreach. But maybe I can just start by saying I really appreciate the context and the background of all of your comments. I think, you know, and Garrett can correct me if I'm wrong, I think our county has the largest number of farms of any county in the country, right? Now, they're not all food producers and the ones that are tend to be relatively small. And the challenges we have for the programs that we're serving through this contract, which is Edgemore, and then the vast majority, 11 of the 12 million being the sheriff's detention facilities, is that there are some challenging requirements in terms of capacity, packaging and the like. But I would like, if we can get Todd and also Steve and the team to come up and talk about the outreach, just to share a little bit about what we're doing to try to onboard as many small, local, organic regeneratives to be on the menu, part of that supply chain under Cisco, because that's probably our best opportunity to involve those local farmers and food distributors and talk about how we're preparing them as well to kind of navigate the process with the county and also the onboarding with Cisco as the prime. So Todd, please take the podium.
Chair Supervisors, how can I help? So I think we've made tremendous progress when this first started out. It was a big underdoing of trying to find local produce and local suppliers that are within our 250-mile radius. And the data that was not out there to begin with, we had to capture. So it was something from, starting from ground zero and there was really, not really a foundation to pull from. So we had structures at Cisco where we could pull data in, mix and matching what the county had requested. And it was really a mixed bag of just kind of putting it all together. We had shared due sessions with DPC, myself, trying to figure out how the reporting would work out correct, would work out and present. I think this last year, what we've learned from, from what we learned from last year to this year was the onboarding of, and working with Food Shed and Food Hub, bringing in Freshpoint to leverage our local produce company who is, who we partner with that has a bigger grasp on local produce and also the 500 suppliers from edible growers that we've reached, that we've reached out to from, that the county had given us. We reached out to them and really set up multiple different ways for them for training. We talked about smart sheets. So when you go onto cisco.com, you can go to supplier diversity and you can scroll down, click on where it says, where it says diversity and inclusion, and then it also says diversity suppliers. It opens up a smart sheet and we actually physically added all six value categories to our supplier smart sheet. So when somebody wants to do business with Cisco, they can go in there, highlight the bubbles, and we're already checking the box to get them pre-certified on where they would hit on the metrics. We've also done touchpoints at the beginning where, yeah, we have popped up a tent and I've sat out in front of Rosemont College or down in, down south and sat there with a table for two hours to two and a half hours and let people come up to myself and ask questions. So there's been a tremendous amount of progress in this and I think, I think if we're looking at the low number of percentage, Brian mentioned a great comment was, you know, this is totality of about 12 million, that 2% is really driven by that, by the Sheriff's Department and by Edgemore. And some of the local produce and what we've, what we've found is the packaging, as we mentioned, distribution, getting it to us. And also too, one of the biggest things is gap, which is a certification, great agricultural practices. We need to make sure that these farms are vetted. We need to make sure that they're safe. We do not, we have cold chains and restrictions that Cisco abides by and supplier chains that we have to make sure that we're abiding by. And if, if a farm is producing that doesn't have, I would say, you know, restrooms or warewash facilities or doesn't have, you know, proper sanitation practice, it's not something that we want to provide food for you guys to, for the county. So we have to vet them too on that aspect. So while there's tons of opportunity, it is a growing trend and it's something that we need to continue to adapt. But honestly, the 2% off of 12 million has, is, it may seem like a small number, but it's really big. We're building a foundation for it to come and year, and year, and year over year.
Thank you for that. I just, you know, I won't say any more than that, other than there are levels, county, statewide, especially with the detention centers and everything. So outreach education is, I think, extremely important, but also continuing to gauge, engage in, the technical assistance is also very, very important for small businesses. So the things that they would need to enter into the procurement world with government is something that frankly, a lot of small businesses don't have assistance in. And so I think looking at that is also important, which sounds like if started that process, we can fall back and have a more of a conversation about how we lead people through the process. Thank you.
I actually just had a question. You guys have mentioned that one of the biggest challenges is sort of the specificity of packaging or specificity of requirements on like the food that's delivered and it's hard to find vendors who meet that. Could you elaborate a bit more on what do you mean? What are the constraints? And also what, so both, but like what are the constraints in terms of like what this food packaging needs to be, which seems like it's on our side, not on the vendor's side? And what could we do on our side to, you know, do we need to be a little bit, rethink a little bit about like what are our packaging requirements? If we have like a grower in, you know, Vista, who's like perfectly capable of providing the food, but it like, the packaging is wrong? I think there's something incumbent on us to think about our packaging requirements.
Chair, thank you for that question. We are going to ask Megan to come up to talk about those packaging requirements along with Erin, to get more information on what those actual packaging requirements are so that we can talk through how to best reframe that if possible.
And also, let me just say, if you don't feel prepared today, maybe this could be part of, it's something you could come back with. I'm kind of thinking about how do we move the ball forward on this? So I don't want to put folks on the spot, so this could be something we could come back with in 90 days or something like that. That sounds great.
Thank you, Chair, for the question. I'm actually, this is fairly specific to our detention facilities, so we may need to come back to you with some more detail on the packaging requirements.
That's fine. Thank you. But it's helpful, just, you know, I think I'm hearing, what I'm hearing here is like, why is this taking so long and why is it moving so slowly and what are the roadblocks? What I'm hearing from you all is, one, the technical assistance issues, which it sounds like we're focused on. Second, that there was like real work to be done to identify, how do you even have metrics around these value categories? So there was like the groundwork to be laid. How do you even track? How do you even track progress on these value categories? How do you measure them? How do you assess them? We've done that work. We know what that work is. We now have like, a framework for reporting, but that itself took time. And then I'm hearing this kind of issue around, like, the packaging requirements, whatever that means. So I just wanted to kind of uplift that these are the barriers I'm hearing from you all. Supervisor Anderson?
I, I think for some of the small producers too, as they move to sell more product, they don't have the economies of scale to perhaps get the equipment necessary to move in. And one of the things we're going to look at is, perhaps, I don't know how our contracts are put together, but perhaps a longer-term contract, so they can get the financing they need to do the upgrades. But on the same token, I'm sure we did outreach to the Farm Bureau, but did we walk, I'm sure we did, but if you could just speak to the Farm Bureau and your outreach there. Some of those folks may be growing flowers today, and that need for flowers may not be as great as the need for tomatoes. And if they knew what our needs were, that might help augment it, you know. I know this sounds silly, but I grow my own tomatoes, and sometimes I have too many. And other days, I don't have any. If I'm a small farm, how do I meet the needs? And when you think in terms of us needing 10,000 tomatoes, and the producer can't consistently produce that, I'm just wondering if we can backfill it with some of the larger farms that used to be fruit, that are now flowers, and maybe they'd be willing to go back to fruit.
We haven't reached out to them locally. It's all about who's been set up as an edible grower, to begin with. But Food Hub, as you mentioned, 36, 37 different type of local producers have been able to offer us some type of solution to, but it's really just getting the seasonality, the product mix, having to work with the menus that Edgemore and the Sheriff's Department under Title 15 to make sure that it is, you know, nutrition, it's hitting all the metrics there. So it's really been a collaboration on all, on all parties to try and lift this up. I think, you know, it has been, I'll kind of stand firm, it has been a tremendous amount of work to get, to get to where we are, and I think we're right at the infancy stage of now we have a foundation, so, which we never had before. And I think if we could get back to the local producers to help and fulfill some of the run-of-the-mill items, you know, tomatoes, lettuce, potato, onions, something that, the normal, we call them plots, right? It's the items that, potatoes, lettuce, onions, and tomatoes, that pretty much all food service operators would use. Those are those high-moving items, and I think with that, would show you the numbers and would move those metrics into a higher number than what we would be, than what we're seeing now. And I think that's where we need to go. I mean, that's the direction, and if we're all talking, looking for a higher percentage of, to hit, that's where we're going to get the biggest thing for our buck, is get that.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like, and I don't want to get out ahead of the board, but I'd really like for them to reach out to the Farm Bureau and explain the issue that we have, and how easy it is to become a vendor, and give them the choice to participate, because backfilling local sources make it small, easier for smaller farms to participate, because they may not feel. There was a great article in Ink Magazine years ago about how Walmart bankrupted companies because they said that they wanted a gallon of pickles, and Velasquez produced a gallon. Unfortunately, they had no idea of the volume, and they took all their cucumbers, and they had to buy extra cucumbers that cost them more than what they could sell it for to fulfill the contract. I just want to make sure that we're not putting people out of business along the way, because they're not prepared for the sheer volume, and that if we can augment it locally with local farmers, that would be a good thing too, I would think. So if everyone's amenable to that, I think that we should reach out to the Farm Bureau and include them in the solution.
Supervisor Anderson, I'm preparing an amendment, so I'll include that. I, in my head, I'm preparing an amendment. So Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, ma'am Chair. And it is millions of dollars, right, that we've been able to save and I guess, or be able to use or put for this effort. And I'm really happy to hear that some of the small businesses and local farmers are providing. That's, that's great. It's a good start, maybe not as quick as some of us might want, but I think it's a good start in the right direction, and particularly, I guess, when we're dealing with Cisco, which is nationwide, it's good, it's kind of hard to, you know, to move that train in a, in a quick manner, but it looks like at least, you know, making some progress on that. But I want to make sure that also, that, you know, it's our job to ensure the taxpayer funds are spent well, and we got to maintain a balance between these goals and fiscal responsibility. We can't, you know, overspend the farm, you know, for this, so, but we do want to use local providers. I think that's a great effort. So I want to make sure we keep costs front of mind, and make sure we do whatever we can to pursue what makes sense and consider, and consider and balances the increased cost. But I think it's a great program, happy to support, and I know there's more work to be done, but it's a step in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Chair Protem and Gary.
Thank you. Real quick, just, I appreciate your efforts to do that outreach that you mentioned, but I would like to see, I imagine this is going to come back to us.
I think this is a great discussion, and my intention, kind of as we draw to conclusion, I have an amendment in mind to kind of come back in 90 days, so.
Okay, so I'd like that to include, in addition to what Supervisor Anderson just mentioned about the Farm Bureau, I want to uplift what the Vice Chair mentioned regarding technical assistance. I think that's incredibly important. I think that, in my experience as an elected official, like, when you wait for folks to come to you, they just don't, they don't have the time, they don't have the resources. And so it's important to bring technical assistance workshops or trainings proactively. So I think that should be part of the conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments, unless Supervisor, did you have something else?
I just, I didn't say thank you. Thank you for all of the work that has gone into this thus far. I think, I think, you know, it's slow, but we're on the right track. And also, there are a bunch of efforts here on this board to, you know, look at our contract process, right? Hopefully, this is a part of the discussion, the subcommittee between the Chair Protem and Supervisor Anderson, and then we have our social equity enterprise. We have a lot going on around this, so the more streamlined and clear that we can be around our efforts, I think the better for the larger community, especially for small businesses that don't have the time to go through all of our stuff, you know? But, but as far as working with the state regulations that we have, I know this is a big part of what we have to do for the, for the detention centers, so thank you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to try to sort of summarize what I'm hearing from everyone. I think what I'd love to do is make a motion to move forward with the recommendation from the CAO, which is to receive an update on the countywide food contract, food contract and progress in implementing Board Policy B75. And then, secondly, ask the team to report back in 90 days with three, on three issues. One, an update on progress and a continued plan on aggressive technical assistance for our small local farms, and stakeholder engagement to enlist our local stakeholders focused on our Local Farm Bureau and our local farms. So that, that report back in 90 days, which should include both, what are we doing already, and what have we accomplished, and what is a plan for the coming year to do better? Particularly, I think as Supervisor Anderson uplifted, the Farm Bureau should be our number one partner here, right? I mean, they're talking to these folks every single day, and the fact that we haven't engaged with them in an aggressive way is not good. But also the, really focus on the technical assistance. What are we doing, and how could we do more on the technical assistance for our local small businesses? So that's number one. Number two, to assess, what are these barriers on our side to taking sort of more diverse products? I don't have a better word for it, but like, what are these packaging barriers? And, you know, I think about this in the context of like, I know there's these programs where you buy imperfect produce, right? Where you get like, the produce nobody else wants, but it's really great, and it's a little cheaper because the, like, potato is the wrong size? I mean, I don't know why all our potatoes have to be the right size, like, just, I think, thinking through in a really rigorous way, like, what are we, what barriers are we creating with our, like, packaging requirements that are making it hard to see progress in these six value areas? What are those barriers, and what could we do better? I think that, that would be really helpful and really important, because we can't just put it on the community if our requirements are unreasonable or just too hard to meet. And then I think the third piece is, I'd really like to see some ambitious but reasonable and achievable goals for the coming year for these six value categories, because frankly, 2.5% is not good, and then there's other categories that have like, $10,000 of purchases are in that category. It's not, not really good progress. So I acknowledge that there was a lot of work that needed to be laid, done to lay the groundwork, but that groundwork has been laid. So I think it's now time to say, okay, are we going to see a tripling, a quadrupling? What's the percentage? What's the, the dollar amount that over the next year would constitute success? I think we need to kind of come back with some real expectations, so that we're all clear, like, what are these smart goals that we're trying to achieve across these six value categories? So if we could have, is that, Brian, would that be enough time? Could we do that in 90 days, and sort of have this assessment and report back?
Yes, Chair, I think for what you're talking about, we can certainly provide a report back on 90 days on the status and the goals moving forward. Yes.
And across all these three areas, the, okay. And again, let me ask my colleagues, it's, I don't, I wonder your view, do we want to return back? In other words, do you want to come back and present this to the board? Or we don't, do we want to report back, which is a memo?
No, I'd like.
You want them to come back? Okay, so that would be a return, a return back rather than a report back. Okay. So that would be my, my motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion and we have a second. Thank you very much. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we're moving on to item 32, receive an update on advancing transparency and accountability on our homelessness response. If the team is ready, go ahead.
Thank you so much. It's still, good morning. Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer and the members of the board. In September, the board directed the Chief Administrative Officer to explore the feasibility of providing a monthly memo detailing progress on efforts to house every homeless individual in the unincorporated areas of San Diego County. The board directed staff to return within 90 days on the specific areas of progress recommended for inclusion. The latest point in time count showed that there were over 200 individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness in the unincorporated communities, in addition to people in emergency housing and safe parking programs. Overall, the point in time count showed the San Diego region saw a 7% overall drop in unsheltered, sheltered homeless individuals from 2024 to 2025. We have made progress, but still have a lot of work to do to end homelessness across our region. Today, we are happy to provide an update on efforts to share our homelessness data publicly. This effort supports the county's framework for ending homelessness. It also supports the Housing for All vision by promoting equitable access to housing, data transparency, and coordinated services that enhance stability and well-being for all residents. I am joined by Deanna Beck, Director for the Office of Homeless Solutions, to provide details.
Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. The county's Office of Homeless Solutions conducts extensive outreach activities in the unincorporated area and throughout the region to connect people experiencing homelessness to essential resources. Currently, the county's emergency housing resources are the Regional Homeless Assistance Program, or R-HAP, and the three safe parking programs. Once we assist in connecting people to these programs, we're able to work on longer-term housing stability plans, including accessing rental subsidies and long-term case management. To enhance our outreach activities and better track outcomes, the Office of Homeless Solutions is in a process of creating a by-name list specific for the unincorporated communities. A by-name list is a practice, as it provides, is a best practice, as it provides a real-time, person-specific list that helps communities understand and address their homelessness population more effectively. We have leveraged this tool for past efforts like the Lead No Veteran Homeless Initiative, the Lemon Grove Homeless Outreach Pilot, and the Encampment Resolution Fund programs. We closely track our outcomes. For example, last year, we referred over 400 households to emergency housing in the Regional Homeless Assistance Program, where 40% of participants exited permanent housing. Using a by-name list in our unincorporated outreach efforts will allow us to strengthen our data collection, collaboration, and better inform our programs to achieve housing outcomes. Moving forward, in response to the board's direction, we will implement two new actions to enhance transparency and accountability. The first is to publish a monthly dashboard specific to the unincorporated communities with the data elements requested by the board. This is an exciting step to make the data publicly available in a straightforward way. The second is to provide a quarterly memo to the board. This memo will include an analysis of the dashboard data and by-name list data. Providing this memo on a quarterly rather than monthly basis will ensure that staff have sufficient data for a comprehensive analysis as to identify any gaps, successes, and trends. For the unincorporated dashboard, we are restructuring data that is currently collected to develop and share beginning in early 2026. The unincorporated dashboard will be updated monthly on the Housing and Community Development Services website. For additional transparency, we will also post monthly dashboards for all current Office of Homeless Solution programs. In addition, the Homelessness Solutions and Prevention Action Plan Dashboard and the Annual Framework for Ending Homelessness Funding Index will also be published. Today's action requests the board to receive this update on the requested memo and the data elements to track progress toward ending homelessness within the unincorporated areas. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Do any of my colleagues have questions? Okay, we can go ahead with public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We do have seven total requests to speak, all coming via phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was in opposition. For any individuals that did request to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial in the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you, you will have two minutes to address the board. If you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record, and we will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
You guys are further showing your negligence, because you continue, and this is just all propaganda, it's like, it looks like you're doing something to mitigate the issues at hand, but when you have NGOs that you guys are contracting with, like Dreams for Change, that are known for abusing their clients, you know, people die there. 24 people have died at Tent City, and you guys have them doing safe sleeping programs, which, when you talk to the people in those programs outside of the county with Dreams for Change, you can tell that they aren't getting the services that they need. You know, like, much of the time, even on Thanksgiving, they left a bunch of food out that rotted, so the people couldn't even eat it. And, you know, they're not putting them into housing because they continually change caseworkers. So it's the NGOs that are impeding your guys' ability to house people, but you also don't even have shelters outside of that to put them in, and the people go and get put on a waitlist, and then you have to wait. And then how many people have you housed that are illegal aliens that have taken a home from somebody here who's been waiting and is in need of it, who is a part of the community and didn't come here illegally? And so it's like, you guys always, you know, want a virtue signal, like you're going to do something, but until you look at those entities and look at what they're doing, there's sexual assault that happened at Tent City. My staff, they hire staff who have ankle monitors, who are on parole, who tell their clients that if they report anything, that they are going to get written up, and they will be exited without 30-day notices, which they're supposed to have. And then they're not even given a chance to appeal. So until you guys start looking at this type of thing, then, you know, you're going to sit here and give us a bunch of data that means nothing, all while the people are suffering and actually need help. But nobody's doing that, you know, they don't, instead of... You know, they don't, instead of, you know, trying to help people make sure they're warm for the winter, they're sitting there segregating Tent City and making sure that the clients-
Thank you, your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Paul LaBelle, interesting update on advancing transparency and accountability in the homeless response. So what is the attachment? A blank monthly report just for the unincorporated areas? Not much transparency if you're looking at the entire county, and you should look at the whole county, since the homeless move around or push around, they shouldn't stay in one spot. And what kind of counter? What is the OHS? Whom did the safe parking programs serve? Families or drivers? And it looks like maybe you should be reporting abuse cases as well. And age should be a number of categories reported separately. Seniors 71 and older, seniors 55 to 70, adults 21 to 54, children 3 to 20, babies 0 to 2. They all have pretty radically different, different character. Then you probably should break down BIPOC numbers for each race instead of just, you know, one big lump thing. And what would we do without proofreaders? Probably better to say BIPOC account. And men do not account, they count. Transparency is not achieved with a short and, in my opinion, cursory form. Transparency is best served by attaching a full counting with meaningful-
Thank you, your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
I'm just chiming in to say that I am listening in and amen to all the previous concerned citizens. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Truly not paying attention.
Thank you.
Okay. Carry on.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Last I checked, we're like 90% citizens, homeless? We built so many houses? Are we still like number five move-out city in the United States? See, none of this stuff actually adds up when you keep on saying that, you know, we don't have resources. Actually, we do, we're just not using the resources properly. You guys haven't cared because you guys are elected by the people that are basically funneling our money. You're not going to go ahead and look into it because, in my opinion, you're idiots, but that's my opinion. Because it's not that hard to see, if the Register voters had to remake 200 to 300 ballots because they came back with the wrong ballot style, meaning completely different ballots, and you guys think this is an okay thing? That's just one boundary. Picture the primary. How many more is that going to be? You don't want to focus, you don't want, you want to ignore it right now? Go ahead. But you are right, you're being told about it right this second. You can pretend stupid all you want. You and I both know it's an act. Just an act. You know what's going on, you're just choosing not to do anything about it, hoping that it's all going to blow over. Problem is that you've been really trying to keep me silent about this. And I have no problem talking about it, regardless on what happens to me. So you're stuck in a real tough situation. I fully understand that. I'm just asking you to-
Thank you, your time is up. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. I want to say thank you very much to staff for your quick work on this update to advance our transparency and accountability to our homeless response. I brought forward a board letter in September of this year, asking staff to work on a monthly report on our homeless response in the unincorporated area. And I think it's critical that we are transparent with the public about their dollars and how they're being spent, particularly with data. So it's critical that we, as the policymakers, have the information that's needed to guide policy decisions moving forward, and we must continue to take steps to end homelessness in the region. I'm also excited to see we're moving forward with the by-name list in the unincorporated area. There's no one-size-fits-all solution when it comes to homelessness, but the by-name list will empower our teams to address the needs of individuals as they encounter them in different parts of the county. Again, I want to thank our county staff for the hard work on this, and I look forward to seeing this on our county's website. I'd move to approve, but I think it's just to receive the report. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
One second if it's needed.
It's needed? Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. We have a motion, a second, please vote.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay, we now have non-agenda public comment, and then we'll have closed session public comment, and after that, we will recess for lunch. So please go ahead and call the non-agenda public comment speakers.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Looking for my sheet here. We do have, we still do have five members of the public signed up to speak for non-agenda public comment, so this is the time to call back in, and we'll give you a moment to do so. Again, you'll have two minutes to address the board. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller for non-agenda public communication.
Look, right now, we could go ahead and just squash a, a real know-nothing election. We could go ahead and show the people right this second how it's happening. Or we could wait until the people figure it out, and this, this meeting, previous meetings, all the actions you've been doing, would just basically be painting a picture of you guys trying to keep this silent, including Carl DeMile. Because Carl DeMile had a perfect opportunity to basically say, hey, we shouldn't certify the election because of, you know, supposedly information that he discovered. Right? It's not that difficult to go ahead and see the fact that there are opportunists that are more than willing to go ahead and do these things. You have no measures to stop opportunists from doing that. This last election showed you 300 people that didn't even care to match up the ballots, making sure that they looked the same, at least. That's really, really terrible when it comes down to the security of our elections. Meaning that you can actually do that, and the Register's office will just remake the ballot so that it, all the, you know, crosses all the Ts. It's ridiculous that you think that this is okay. Excuses for it, but what are we to do? We must trust you? You guys are making the greatest choices for us. Meanwhile, billions of dollars is going to very selected organizations. You guys pass these measures on a constant basis. What, we're not allowed to be mad? Are we? We're not allowed to be mad?
System's-
It's kind of-
Let me go ahead and mute him there while the system catches up. But your time is up, and you are past your time. Two minutes, just waiting for our system to respond before I go on to the next caller here. There we go. Okay. Go to our next speaker here.
Supervisors, this is Ann Riddle. Thank you for everyone's patience with the phone-in system this morning, and just in the last little bit, the sound quality is sketchy, and just reaching you all has been difficult. I'm a parent and grandparent, and I volunteer in after-school programs, and that's where I am, is preparing for it. And I'd just like to respectfully suggest that we're only five of us that could have finished non-agenda public comment this morning, and that would have been 10 minutes. It seems like in this season of kindness, it would have been a very kind thing to do, since most of us are probably calling in from work or other responsibilities, that just hanging on to catch this little fraction of time. One of the things that I wanted to share was that since I work with so many students and I'm a grandparent, you hear a great deal about what influences their choice-making and what they notice. And we see firsthand the disparity in health issues out here in the unincorporated area. And a particular concern to us, at least to me, is the role that tobacco-related disease and death play, and the disparities that come with their exposure to signage, advertising, availability, billboards. Recently, Stan Glantz, a faculty member at UCSSF, San Francisco School of Medicine, has been writing about this situation, and he has added how important it is to realize the growing role of cannabis in undermining the work of decades of past tobacco control and prevention work. And it's heavy cannabis contribution to health disparities, and especially since we notice in young people the co-use of tobacco and cannabis, and now we see it in our baking products. And I think it's really important as you make policies going forward.
Thank you, your time is up. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on non-agenda public communication this afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go to closed session public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Item 33, yesterday, on yesterday's General Legislative Session Agenda, are closed session matters. A closed session agenda includes seven matters. Individuals that have requested to speak on closed session matters must provide comments related to the matter listed in the closed session item, otherwise your comments will be considered off-topic. We do have six total requests to speak, all coming via phone. So again, for any individuals that requested to speak on closed session matters by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you, you will have two minutes to address the board. If you could please begin by stating your name for the record, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Arabella McCormick's death should have been an immediate cause for an audit to happen within the agency. Instead, you guys transform it to hide her death and the negligence of the agency, and it continues to this day, and it's been happening from even before her death. And there were so many people that were supposed to be there to protect her that weren't. And the fact that you guys continue to, you know, violate these children's rights and parents' rights, I mean, there's a civil rights investigation going on in the county for the Robinson family, and you should be, you know, taking heed to that because the agency is obstructing justice by hiding sexual abuse. They are encouraging parents to lie, because if they do, then they'll get their kids back. They tell them false information, they add false information to report. The fact that they bring restraining orders against grandparents to further, you know, terminate families. And you guys obviously don't care about Polanski and San Pasquale. So you guys need to understand that this lawsuit should be enough for you to do an immediate audit on the entire agency to make sure that this abuse isn't happening within your own social workers, that you hire that's under HHS, that's under Elizabeth Hernandez and Alfredo Gardado. So you guys need to course correct and make sure that we don't have other lawsuits like this. But you better be doing your due diligence to make sure that you make things right, even though money doesn't make it right. But also bring forward an audit, which is absolutely imperative if you guys want people to believe that you care about their well-being and you care about family reunification, because all you guys do is get Title IV funding to rip families apart because-
Thank you, your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
So you're back to the non-editable list of cases, and I'm sure you don't care about the Brown Act, but I wish you'd bring it back to an editable list. And then there are two cases we know, no details on, more secrecy, I guess. Then instead of Yates versus Catty jail death case, and you yourselves even seem to agree that there was substantial care, so settle that already. Marcus Boyd versus Catty, a reporter illegally jailed, and the courts already gave their verdict. Hope you're chewing out the sheriffs, people who jailed him. The Arabella McCormick case. For four years, the county ignored evidence of starvation, beatings, and abuse of her and her foster brother and sister. Good evidence of CWS and CBS need to be reformed. The tragedy that she died. The county needs to settle, not sweep it under the rug. Also, really reform CWS and CBS by our few people. Yes, you still need to permit the county council, hopefully one who proved reads better than the last several incumbents. And the labor discussion presumably with the interim said that cancel, county council. Having second thoughts about working here, maybe. And I hope you all settle the 150-odd case-related to Polanski center abuses. How much will continuing putting us discussion costs us and money interest and what-
Thank you, your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Hey there, it's truth. Case B, Marcus Boyd versus the county. I actually last saw him at tacos with a cop in Imperial Beach, him and his crew tried to hijack the entire event with their anti-cop agenda, and luckily, us regular people were there to take it back from the anti-cop crazies. They actually should move to the city of San Diego, that might feel more comfortable there. I didn't see existing litigation, Arabella McCormick versus Rock Church, et cetera. It was interesting to see on another journey, to see the Rock Church have the audacity to show their faces at the tree lighting at El Cajon recently. They were giving out candy canes and information, nothing about that case, go figure, huh? They were very kind, but they should have been offering apologies and new policies to prevent their members from committing extreme abuse upon children. Of course, the county has a very, very big role in letting it happen. That's the real guilty in that case. Case S, county council, when will the county be getting a new council clown? Because the curtain was already worn out. Does any, does nobody want to work for a corrupt morally deprived board? Is that what the problem is? Case C, anticipated litigation, how much will the taxpaying residents of the county have to pay the family of teenager Canoa Wilson, who was not shot because he was black, unlike Henry Foster's lies? He was wrongly shot and killed by San Diego PD Officer Gold. That criminal cop needs to be in prison on murder charges. $30 million from San Diego and et cetera is not- Thirty million dollars from San Diego and et cetera is not real justice. He didn't even know who he shot in the back twice at that. And for any anticipated litigation, what would help is indeed firing bad county employees. But the question is, how would you guys know who's bad if San Willa has a problem with us saying who's bad?
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Good evening. My name is Kenya Peraza, and I am a San Isidro School District Board Member. Some of you might have heard of me. I know Ms. Paloma-Guerra has heard from me from her South Bay friends. And, but tonight, well, today, I'm actually here speaking as an individual and as a mother, not on behalf of the board. And as we come to the end of the year, season of giving, compassion, and forgiveness, I want to strongly urge this board to take a moment in closed session to discuss a situation that deeply concerns me, the case of Evelyn Lopez and her two daughters, Malika and Sayya. Please do not forget their names, Malaya and Sayya. Write them down. These little girls are currently in the custody of Child Welfare Services. Their mother, Evelyn, has completed her entire program. She has done everything required of her, and her daughters want nothing more than to be reunited with them during Christmas. I am pleading with you. Please do everything in your power to help make this happen. These children are suffering. They have been separated from their mother and from their new siblings, and they deserve the chance to heal and be whole again. Please show compassion. Use every tool available to advocate for these girls to ensure that this system does not continue to fail them. Let this district be part of the solution, not part of the silence. And beyond this case, I urge the board to take a closer look at how this system impacts Latino and Hispanic families, who often our community lives in fear, fear of authority, fear due to language barriers, fear of misunderstandings. Sometimes words are confused, emotions are misunderstood.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that concludes public comment on the Closed Session Matters.
Okay. Thank you very much. Since 12:30, we will recess for an hour, reconvene in closed session at 1:30 for lunch. We have a long closed session, so I'm going to give folks time to get lunch. Yeah. What's up? You need to eat. Okay. Yeah, we're going to, so let's give folks time to eat. So we'll be back in closed session at 1:30. Thank you.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under Item 33 on yesterday's session agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session today.